Ahora vamos a tomar un receso para sesión privada, ¿de qué se trata? Miembro del Consejo, no tenemos ningún pedido para hablar en la sesión privada. Pues señor abogado, por favor diga qué es lo que vamos a considerar en la sesión privada.
Sí, tenemos unas dos casos separados, primero el anumbramiento de un empleado público y la otra es una conferencia con negociaciones laborales. Vamos a regresar aproximadamente a las 11 de la mañana, muchas gracias.
Estamos levantando la sesión otra vez del 11 de mayo 2021, por favor señor abogado reporte qué pasó en la sesión privada.
En la sesión privada se consideró el anumbramiento del Consejo de Abogado y un tema de negociaciones, pero no hay nada que reportar de esa sesión privada. Ahora la aprobación de las minutas de la reunión especial, del reporte, la reunión general de las dos últimas fechas. Se ha sido, hay una moción para aprobar las minutas de esas dos reuniones. Está en todo de acuerdo, no hay nadie en contra.
¿Algún anuncio o cambios a la agenda hoy?
Miembro del Consejo sí, muchas gracias, un par de anuncios esta mañana. Quiero recordarle al público que las reuniones ahora están siendo interpretadas y en español, en vivo y estamos en español para CoastGables, para los suscriptores en el Condado Sur, como así también en Comcast del Norte, los miembros del público pueden escuchar en español utilizando la característica SAP, S-A-P, donde están los idiomas y también las personas que van a participar tienen una manera alterna de participar. El público puede participar y comentario público o para hacer comentarios pueden ir a la página 2 de la agenda y las personas que quieren dar comentarios verbales lo pueden hacer vía Zoom, se registran por adelantado y las instrucciones están en la página 2 de poder registrarse. Van a tener un correo electrónico que confirma de que pueden hablar y una vez que se anuncia el artículo usted puede hacer comentarios y le van a dar la información de su registro, le van a llevar por su nombre o los cuatro dígitos de su número. Cuando le dan línea usted puede desenmudecer, si está utilizando un teléfono es estrellas seis para desenmudecer cada persona. Puede hablar hasta tres minutos o discreción del director, puede llamar por teléfono tiene preguntas 805 568 2240. 805 568 2240. Tengo dos anuncios rápidos con respecto a la agenda. Hemos puesto un agregado el viernes agregando el número 20 a la agenda administrativa patrocinada por Servicios Generales. Considera recomendación con respecto a la reasignación de asistencia de emergencia de programa GIFAPP para reubicación del proyecto Pallet al centro en el cuarto distrito desde el lugar en Isla Vista y una tercera enmienda al acuerdo de licencia de Samaritan Inc. para utilizar esos servicios de emergencia y estos disponibles para el público en línea también. Y último anuncio es que hay un pedido con respecto al número cuatro en la agenda va a ser, el departamento piden de aplazar eso hasta el 22 de junio y el número cuatro del sheriff es una audiencia para considerar recomendaciones con respecto a la ley de la verdad y había una audiencia que iba a considerar recomendaciones para el foro de la comunitario y hay un pedido de aplazarlo hasta el 22 de junio 2021. Y miembro del director quiero notificar, no tenemos ningún tipo de artículo sobre el aplazamiento y si ustedes quieren tomar acción en el aplazamiento, pero al número cuatro. Voy a hacer una moción de mover el cuatro al 22 de junio, ha sido secundado, hay una conversación. Estoy desilusionada, estamos aplazando esto, tiene que ser una presentación por la tarde, pero tenemos varias presentaciones el pasado y queríamos hacerlo tarde del día. La gente se moviliza, trabajan con la gente que está interesada en este tema y a últimos minutos se enteran, no tenemos que desmovilizar y hacerlo todo otra vez. Creo que, espero que no pase otra vez. Gracias profesor Hamman, le voy a decir al público que era un problema del sheriff con programación y el deseo de tenerlo por la tarde, he hecho un compromiso de ver si podemos acomodar al público con este artículo cuando haremos el 22 de junio y estamos hablando con, ahí vamos a ver si podemos buscar la manera de la cantidad del público que está listo para participar. Hay una moción y ha sido secundada, no hay comentario público en el tema de... Miembro, creo que eso es correcto, no tenemos pedido con respecto al aplazamiento. Y con eso, todos los que están a favor. Ok, ha sido votado por unanimidad de aplazarlo hasta el 22 de junio. El reporte de la directora, de la oficial de la ejecutiva y no hay reporte. ¿Hay algún tipo de rubro que iba a ser quitado? A6 por favor, pide uno de los supervisores. Yo decido sacar A20. El público, miembro del Consejo tenemos un pedido de hablar en... en el número seis, muy bien. Hay una moción de aprobar la agenda, hay una moción para aprobar la agenda menos seis y veinte, no hay discusiones. Todos los que están a favor, sí están todos a favor, muy bien, nadie en contra. Se acepta y aprueba la agenda administrativa, A6 y 20 van a ser hablados y el 19 va a ser leído en los registros después que terminamos con el seis y el 20. Por favor lea el artículo seis, miembro del Consejo, el número seis de la oficina ejecutiva, oficina ejecutiva con respecto a la adopción de, la adopción de 2022 a las contribuciones y rangos de pago para los empleados. ¿Quiere hacer un comentario público primero en este artículo? Alguien que quiere hablar, Andy Colwell. Señor Colwell, cuando esté listo.
Miembro del Consejo. Estoy agradecido que señor Labañino lo sacó del calendario, pero estoy muy desilusionado. Para la gente que no está familiarizado que nada para ver aquí, porque por supuesto no se espera que van a discutir totalmente o deliberar. Sin embargo, este año tienen, no tienen fondos de responsabilidad, son un billón de dólares de responsabilidad financiera. O sea, los contribuyentes están con un billón de dólares para la pensión de jubilados. Está basado en el sistema de siete por ciento de asunción de retorno con inversión todos los años y en la página 11 de su reporte dice que este escenario es altamente improbable aunque el plan logre el retorno del siete por ciento. Y el hecho de que si baja la página 29, la página 29 que solamente golpearon o lograron el siete por ciento, solamente en los últimos 20 años unas pocas veces. Es el porcentaje cinco por ciento. Yo tengo expertos nacionales en responsabilidades con pensiones y uno de los secretos de los fondos de pensiones y jubilación que es siete por ciento es una asunción basado en fondo de cien por cien. La última vez cuanto, la cantidad de retorno debe ser mayor y el año pasado cuando llegaron a punto siete ocho, en punto siete cero cero van a tener que, van a tener que catorce por ciento para poder estar empatar con lo que pagaron el año pasado. Esto es insostenible y ustedes negocio como todo ponerlo en el calendario de administración. Necesitaba mejor liderato que esto, algunas de estas cosas son técnicamente más a su control debido a la regla de California, pero ¿cuándo fue la última vez que la ciudad y los condados hicieron un lobby al estado para cambiar la regla de California? Nunca la he visto en la agenda de la legislatura como parte de su lobby, nunca he escuchado que los senador, señor Jackson o Limón de cambiar la regla de California, porque en general se estima de que el gobierno en su totalidad está, ellos están en deuda un trillón de, un trillón de dólares. Gracias. Gracias, Andy Colwell, su profesor Labañino. Yo creo que es un tema importante y por eso lo quise hablar de él. Esto no significa que no tenemos actualización de señor Levin y el Consejo de CEB están programados. Lo que tenemos que darnos cuenta también es que esta información tiene un año de viejo, eso del año anterior. Por lo tanto, era un solo punto uno por ciento del año fiscal 2020. Para darle a ustedes unas noticias, señor Colwell tiene que trece años, tiene que pegar, lograr catorce, este año estaba casi a veinte por ciento del retorno. Cuando la gente me pregunta, ese billón de dólares va a bajar sustancialmente. Creo lo que tenemos que mirar y lo que yo aprecio al estar en el Consejo del CSEB Bor. No se puede mirar esto a través de año por año, es difícil. Como patrocinador del plan tenemos que hacer el presupuesto año a año, esto es una mirada de treinta años de los desempeños. Cuando le pregunto al Condado, ¿es sostenible la pensión de jubilados si recibe el siete por ciento? Sí, es sostenible, si no hay siete por ciento sí es sostenible. Creo que la cifra que hay que mirar es desde que comenzó cuáles han sido los retornos, ha habido buenos años, hubo veintidós por ciento en 2011 y tuvimos ceros, pero si usted hace un promedio es ocho punto tres por ciento de retorno. Algunos están de acuerdo con el programa de pensión para los empleados públicos, algunos no, quizá tiene que ser un híbrido, no lo voy a... Pero mi trabajo es tratar de que logremos el siete por ciento y hacer lo mejor que podemos para estar diversificados. Tengo confianza en el personal, en los últimos cinco años ha habido exceso del siete por ciento. Siete de los últimos once. Es un plan a largo plazo. Tenemos personas altamente calificadas trabajando en el Consejo. Ellos han buscado a los más brillantes para este plan a largo plazo. Yo quiero ver a señor Levin la próxima vez que venga frente al Consejo. El año que viene quizás va a ser difícil lograr veinte por ciento, tenemos una barra alta este año, pero el promedio es ocho punto tres por ciento. Gracias profesor Labañino, hay una moción, moción de aceptar la A6, ha sido secundada, no hay discusión. Se vota, sí, unanimemente votado, pasó unanimemente. A20. El número 20, Servicios Subscritos y Servicios Generales considera recomendaciones la reasignación de asistencia programas GIF para el proyecto Shelter and Refugio del Condado y para el lugar en Isla Vista y una enmienda al acuerdo de licencia con Samaritan Inc. para usar el lugar de abrigo como puente. Solamente, no tengo preguntas, eso creo que aprecio que el personal esté disponible para preguntas. Los lugares en Isla Vista van a ser reubicados en Lompoc, estoy preocupado. Mi personal. Y hemos trabajado la semana pasada para aliviar las preocupaciones, para que la gente no empiece a imaginar que la población no va a ir para allá, son bienes que tiene, están buscando otro lugar. Inicialmente detener a la capacidad del puente sin mirar qué es, bueno es el plan en el Valle de Lompoc. Transporte de la casa de Puente o Bridge House, no se puede, no se pueden llegar ahí sin cruzar el puente. Mezclar las poblaciones con las familias que utilizan la casa Puente, con lo que vienen como sí también. Como esto hace un factor para... una limpieza del proyecto del río de Lompoc San Tenés y... No todas mis preocupaciones han sido aplacadas, pero en este momento tengo un compromiso de ACDE y la ciudad de Lompoc de trabajar juntos para resolver estos temas. Y esta noche voy a ir a una reunión en Parque que estamos tratando de resolver los problemas de las gentes sin techo en Lompoc y que sea un modelo el Lompoc para todo el Condado cuando hablamos de estos temas difíciles. Quiero hacer una moción de aprobar este artículo. Ha sido secundado y quiero decir que... El abrigo de paletas en Isla Vista aprendimos mucho y Good Sam ha sido un modelo en ser pioneros de estabilizar a la gente sin techo, diversos servicios a largo plazo, para vivienda a largo plazo. Van a estar muy, agradecido que va a estar disponible en Lompoc. Todos los que están a favor, sí, nadie está en contra, pasó unanimemente. Esto, tenemos un artículo va a ser presentado, ha sido aprobado, por favor lee A19. El número 19, patrocinado por el supervisor Labañino, resolución para Hallan Hancock College por proveer cien años de servicio en educación para los estudiantes de la comunidad. Y vía Zoom tenemos a Kevin Walters, Ren Pensa, John Hutton y Suzanne Levy, gracias. Ahora voy a leer, la resolución la voy a leer en los registros. Hallan Hancock College ha servido como un contribuyor crítico de acceso de alta educación a la comunidad establecida como Junior College en Santa María. Hallan Hancock abre las puertas a estudiantes del Condado Norte de Santa Barbara y más allá que de otra manera no tendrían la oportunidad de ir a la universidad. Hallan Hancock College va a proveer acceso equitativo, actividades prácticas, oportunidades de empleo, sin importar el origen nacional, género, raza, sexo. Y Hallan Hancock College tiene un programa que se llama La Promesa asegurando que cada graduado del distrito recibe el primer año gratis cuando va a la universidad. Y en 2018 el Hancock Promise ha servido más de cuatro mil estudiantes que van a ser parte del, que han comenzado con sus carreras líderes de la comunidad. Se comienza aquí, se va a cualquier lado es el logo y van a celebrar cien años. Y lo importante que es para la ciudad, para individuos, que se basan en la importancia de la educación que ofrecen desde el 1920. Este consejo de supervisor ofrece las felicitaciones a Hallan Hancock que es la universidad más importante del Condado Norte. Cien años de calidad de educación y cambiar el destino de muchos estudiantes. Muchas gracias, su profesor Labañino. Gracias por tener esta presentación. Mi mamá y yo, yo, mi papá, todos fuimos a Hallan Hancock, mis tres hijos. Y es un tentamento de empezar aquí, uno fue a Long Beach State, el otro fue a Long Island, el otro UCLA. La belleza de tener esta universidad allí. Es, han educado farmacista, tecnólogo y volver y viven en Santa María con carrera de recompensa. La promesa de Hallan Hancock es un cambio en la vida. El futuro es muy brillante. Y se habla de moverse a tener cuatro años, es la joya de Santa María. Y tenemos aquí al presidente Kevin Walters. Muchas gracias, su profesor Labañino. Queremos estar en un proceso de hablar con ustedes y los medios, estamos muy agradecidos de este reconocimiento. Hemos hablado de cambiar la vida, de que los estudiantes puedan sobrevivir y el objetivo de quitar barreras. Y la mayoría de nosotros que podemos sobreponernos a las barreras y lograr triunfos. Estamos muy contentos, el otoño y el 22 de mayo vamos a tener cien años. Y va a haber para el seu cien aniversario vamos a tener una celebración virtual. Gracias a todos. Hemos perdido sonido por este reconocimiento y esperamos servir otras horas. Quiero agregar un par de cosas, muy orgullosa que en Lompoc tenemos la Universidad College de Hallan Hancock, es un centro cultural arte, música y las obras de teatro. Tiene mucho valor a todas nuestras vidas, no solamente a los estudiantes. Yo fui maestra de universidad y en el valor académico, si usted tiene un buen estudiante que va a una universidad que agrega un poco de valor, pero los estudiantes que vienen donde hogares donde no tienen revistas, libros o que no fueron a la escuela y los llevan a Hallan Hancock y de ahí van a cualquier lado, el valor agregado es enorme. No hay que minimizarlo. Necesitamos el Condado Norte una universidad de cuatro años que sea una universidad pública sería el mejor empuje para el Condado Norte. Familias de latinos donde los estudiantes no quieren alejarse de su familia, tienen que ayudar, tiene un sentido quedarse en casa, cerca de casa y no hay opciones. Yo sí es, puede ser el lugar apropiado o no, espero que pongamos tener una universidad de cuatro años porque continuaría con la tradición de ser una institución principal, felicitación por los cien años, es un lugar maravilloso. Quiero organizar que a la videocomitente Levy quiere decirle a todos muchas gracias por la proclamación. He estado en Santa María, Santa Bárbara, cuarenta años, yo sé lo que Hancock ha contribuido a Lompoc y a Santa María es una joya. Y como dijo su profesor Labañino, aprecio su conocimiento. Gracias videocomitente Levy. Mis niños, tres de la escuela secundaria, han podido sacar unidades de la universidad, son tercera generación estudiantes. Mi mamá fue a Hancock, mi esposa fue a Hancock, yo he tomado clases. Mi mamá fue Hancock, mi esposa fue Hancock, yo he tomado clases parte de nuestra vida y la reputación de Hancock ha mejorado muchísimo durante mi vida. Antes se lo miraba para abajo como un precio de consola, consolación. Pero con el compromiso del Condado Norte creo para la infraestructura y las mejoras que se llevaron a cabo y ahí en Lompoc han cambiado la vida en Lompoc. También quiero tomar esta oportunidad de felicitar a Larry Lair después de veinte años que recientemente se ha retirado, pero con su liderato y con el liderato de Walters es la institución primaria. Felicitaciones. No necesitamos un voto, se aprueba con toda la gente. Muchísimas gracias. Y ahora en estos momentos pro miembro público que quieren hablar sobre temas que no están en la agenda. Tenemos un pedido de hablar en comentario público. Catalina Rosental. Señor Rosental, cuando esté lista puede empezar a hablar.
Buenos días, miembro director, Catalina Rosental. Estoy aquí sobre el proyecto de la cabalgata en Santa Inés. Todavía estamos tratando de juntar información, que es una parte del componente y la descripción y la razón para el proyecto de acuerdo personal y aprobado por el Consejo de Supervisores y la proclamación. Y esa información no se ha llevado apropiadamente y todo el usuario, si no captura los diarios, los trans-entra, no tampoco a la gente que son los que son jinetes y queremos hacer una reunión de chequeo de la manera antigua. Y esta semana pasada he recibido dos respuestas a la resolución, uno del supervisor John Hartman, que aprecia que trabajar con nosotros para tratar de conseguir una respuesta para el Parque, para no volver a la manera de colectar los costos y la entrada porque si no el tráfico en realidad se recula hasta el ciento cincuenta y cuatro. Y este fin de semana, la semana pasada, el día de la madre, fui a mirar personalmente y pensaba que este era un fin de semana para cachoma, la una de la tarde, la tarde, no había ningún tipo de amontonamiento. Y la segunda respuesta es del personal que debemos tener suficiente información del uso de cabalgata para la entrada principal y esto se llevó a cabo el año pasado. Y hemos reunido bastante buena información de parte de los jinetes porque no es lo que utilizan en el pase anual. Y estos años quiero retirar que la reunión de toda la información debe llevarse a cabo de acuerdo a todo para ser válido porque los tiempos y los lugares, porque esto depende de cuántos días el sendero puede ser usado, el clima y realmente debemos insistar de que la colección para todos los usuarios se llevan a cabo concurrentemente para ser válido también anoche. El comité de cabalgatas tuvo una reunión sobre Live Box y espero eso que resulte un trabajo de grupo que podemos hablar sobre temas, sobre el sendero de cabalgata, de Live Box y ayudamos por toda la información que recibimos de Hartman y todos los miembros. Muchas gracias por permitirmi hablar hoy. Gracias,岩罗 sentan. Comentario público de Jack Anis. Y también implicaciones legales. Señor Guzón, usted quiere hacer comentarios? Voy a hacerle hacer un comentario de que esto ocurre después de coordinación con el director de planeamiento Isa Pama y con la preinigitan. Miramos al comentario, el correo electrónico y línea por línea tengo dos temas. Tema uno, en Santa Claus Lane, en el área esa, todo tipo de frentes de cannabis requiere un permiso de la costa y con CDH. Y eso es parte de la ordenanza de la zona costera y tiene que ser aprobado con la comisión de costera. Y la segunda parte del comentario público hablaba sobre los récords y respuestas. Fuimos y miramos y creemos del condado hizo a tiempo con una serie de todas las respuestas de dos récords que fueron pedidos. Hemos mirado, sé que esto es un área con mucho interés público, creo que el condado está correcto en ambos temas. Muchas gracias, Guzón. Esto concluye comentario público. Y vamos a hablar sobre el tema uno ahora. Lee por favor el artículo uno. El artículo número uno del Condado es una audiencia para conseguir recomendaciones con respecto a la actualización de COVID-19 y la enfermedad y la pandemia. Doctora Avanzorinoso, cuando esté lista proceda. Gracias. Buenos días, director Nelson, miembro del consejo. El tópico esta mañana incluye en las medidas, de plano de medidas, los esfuerzos de vacuna. Anticipamos que al mediodía hoy el estado va a anunciar que Santa Bárbara tiene tres punto cinco casos de ajustes para la asignación y fuimos ajustados del cuatro punto uno por día por ciento cien mil. Nuestra positividad está punto cuatro, con la positividad en el área de metro a uno punto nueve. Por lo tanto, con estas medidas, Santa Bárbara va a permanecer en el color naranja esta semana. Tenemos que bajar más abajo de dos casos cada cien mil por dos semanas antes de movernos al color amarillo. Quiero compartir que tenemos buenas tendencias para el condado, excepto por cuatro lugares. Estamos viendo una reducción en casos en todo el condado, casos activos están siendo reducidos. No tenemos pacientes, desde ayer no tenemos pacientes de cuidado intensivo y no estamos aquí durante toda la pandemia. Esta es la primera vez que tenemos cero pacientes en cuidado intensivo desde que hicimos el seguimiento en abril de 2020. La otra última vez que estuvimos así de bajo fue cuando tuvimos un paciente al final de octubre 2020. Esto realmente es muy buenas noticias y noticia de que quizás estamos dando vuelta a la esquina. Para las actualizaciones diarias pueden ir al tablero de Salud Pública, sbc.org. Y con respecto a los esfuerzos de vacuna tenemos sesenta y dos por setenta y uno por setenta y dos punto uno por ciento de la población que califica, que han recibido la primera dosis y de eso tenemos considerado que cuarenta y ocho punto seis por ciento de toda la población que clasifica son totalmente vacunados. Otra manera de mirarlo esto es de que si miramos a todos el condado y la población, el porcentaje del condado que está vacunado, por lo menos con la primera dosis, es cuarenta y nueve punto cinco por ciento. Y el porcentaje total de todo totalmente vacunado a treinta y ocho punto siete por ciento. Con respecto a las cifras de vacunas en Santa Bárbara para esta semana hemos tenido un total de seis mil seiscientos cincuenta vacunas que van a ser a los proveedores de redes como así también. En las clínicas de vacuna de comunidad tenemos quince mil setecientos treinta dosis que estamos en reserva. Lo que significa es que en nuestro cuidado de salud tenemos casi quince mil setecientos treinta dosis que nos fueron usadas y estamos planeando usarlas. No hemos ordenado más porque lo que tenemos en las reservas. Esto es un gráfico de las clínicas móviles. Estamos en la cuarta semana. Durante la cuarta semana tuvimos veinte clínicas dando un total de mil quinientos sesenta y cuatro inyecciones a miembros de la comunidad en su conveniencia y en los lugares donde ellos han preferido. Estos son el porcentaje de clínicas móviles por sector. Durante la cuarta semana, es el último martes a través del domingo, ocho clínicas en varios sitios como Swap Meet, mercados abiertos, UCI SB. Ocho clínicas en otros lugares donde tenemos lugares de viviendas, lugares de agricultura. Y quiero recordarle que estamos haciendo un compromiso con clínica de vacuna semanalmente en lugares donde hay vivienda para agricultores. Tenemos tres clínicas en los abrigos sin techo y una en el faith based location, se ha basado en religión. Tenemos un nuevo lugar que va a comenzar a vacunar y va a estar en Santa María Fair Park Pavilion. Y va a comenzar el domingo dieciséis de mayo. Las horas van a ser domingo a jueves, miércoles de diez de la mañana a siete de la tarde y los jueves de once de la mañana a ocho de la noche. Y usted puede hacer cita a través de My Turn o puede solamente llegar sin cita, o sea camine hasta allá, o sea no se necesita cita. Preséntese y le van a dar la vacuna. El próximo grupo que estamos planeando es el doce y mayores. Como han escuchado ayer, el FDA dio autorización emergencia Pfizer para que comiencen a vacunar a los doce y mayores, niños de doce y mayores. Y CDC puso las guías y las dosis y se van a reunir mañana para votar, que se anticipa al mediodía. CDC y California, el Departamento de Salud Pública, vamos a proveer todas las noticias y novedades y guías después de ese voto. Mientras tanto, en anticipación estamos planeando para que las clínicas se hagan en las escuelas y vamos a implementarla quizás la próxima semana. También estamos en los etapas de planeo con farmacias y otros proveedores de salud que están proviendo la vacuna Pfizer. Y además de eso, el equipo de vacuna del público debe ir a escuelas para proveer las vacunas a los niños doce y mayores. Termino mi presentación y voy a recibir preguntas. Supervisor labañino. Doctora Agnozo. El porcentaje de gente que califica. Dieciséis mayores, si ponemos ahora los doce años mayores. ¿Cuál es la diferencia de sesenta y dos por ciento y cuarenta y nueve por ciento del otro lado? Cuarenta y nueve por ciento es todos, incluyendo niños, correcto. ¿Por qué tenemos el seguimiento? Si la persona no puede ser vacunada estamos enfocando el sesenta y dos por ciento, correcto. Una, cada tres vacunas fueron en Hancock. Quiero hacerle Kevin Walters por tener esa estadística. Quiero hablar sobre máscaras. Esta es la primera reunión en donde todo en el mismo cuarto. Y lo que he disfrutado remoto es que no tenía que usar la máscara. Y el Departamento de Salud Pública, la guía es que usar la máscara en puertas adentro si está totalmente vacunado con otra persona. Cuando alguien mira este programa, si pueden explicar, señor Gustavo, ¿por qué estamos todos usando máscaras? ¿Por qué? Que empiece señor Guzón y con sus reglas. Gracias por la pregunta. Nosotros vivimos, tenemos muchos diferentes reglamentos, CDPH es uno de ellos. La otra de salud de California y el requisito que habla ahora es directamente de la salud y salud ocupacional. Y un comentario también, tenemos cambios de Cal Olla que hablan distancia y cobertura para personas vacunadas y no vacunadas. Y el punto es que el condado pero también somos patrón y este reglamento a todos los patrones y en todos los lugares excepto porque trabajar de casa que no aplican a la audiencia. Y como estaban mirando en esto en estos momentos y el futuro quizá va a haber un cambio con los reglamentos. Pero todavía va a requerir que el condado tenga sus empleados utilizar máscaras cuando están adentro, a menos que están a seis, seis pies. Va a haber un, pero creo que la cobertura de máscara todavía va a estar para Cal Olla, a menos que haya un cambio por esos reglamentos. Que Cal Olla va a tener una audiencia al veinte y tenemos un trabajo, un grupo de trabajadores que queremos aclaración y correcciones y ya hemos conversado. Si tenemos la habilidad es que estamos en un área, estamos tratando de la gente que, la gente se vacune y si no mostramos ninguna conducta diferente hay que tener una especie de recompensa. Si podemos mostrar seis personas, no tenemos gente en cuidado intensivo. Llega un momento que queremos gritar victoria demasiado rápido, todavía existe la enfermedad, pero vamos a vivir con este virus por el resto de nuestras vidas. Y creo que es importante tener liderato, demostrar, son los primeros que usamos la máscara. Fue rápido para implementar la ordenanza. Y vamos a ser rápidos en quitarlo cuando no tiene sentido. O sea, creo que quiero notar el hecho de que hemos logrado sesenta y dos por ciento y de vacuna, eso es significativo. Y no sabía qué pasaría tan rápido, pero eso es todo el trabajo que ha hecho el Departamento de Salud, las personas que están tratando de tomar su turno, que se vacunan. Estaba pensando en manera de contar la historia que está hablando el labañino. ¿Cuál es la razón? Y hablar con Ren Asahov, que es el CEO y médico en Sanson Clinic. El supervisor tiene historias que puede compartir con el público sobre razones para crear vacunarse y historias de motivación. Y me mandó tres que son buenas. Una es uno de los doctores que notó que ella y su madre están vacunadas por primera vez en un año, pudieron juntarse en nursing home en el día de la madre. Y esos son logros significativos. Todos tuvimos ese día, el día de la madre, de tener la oportunidad de estar con nuestros padres. Y hambre aparte de estar vacunado fue clave de tener éxito. Otra historia que uno los compartieron. Uno de los pacientes recibió la vacuna, viajó al este con una gran reunión familiar. Había dos de las personas estaban vacunados en este grupo de veinte personas y todos enfermados con COVID. Menos lo que estaba vacunado. La consecuencia fue... menos los que estaban vacunados. La consecuencia fue significativa financieramente, tuvieron que estar en cuarentena, no pudieron trabajar por dos semanas y eso representó una... Pero los que estuvieron vacunados estaban seguros, viene el regreso de su trabajo. Eso es un ejemplo concreto de los beneficios de estar vacunados. Y el último es una historia muy linda. Con la graduación que va a ocurrir, un paciente de ochenta años no quería darse la vacuna y el doctor le aplicó de la graduación de su nieto y que no iba a poder hablarla. Y él dijo, ¿por qué no vas? ¿Por qué no vacunas y te vas? Y ella lo pensó y dijo sí, es una reunión, voy a ser parte de eso. Se vacunó y con mucho gusto le dijo al doctor de que va a ir a volar y va a ir a Nebraska a ver a la graduación de su hijo. Hay buenos y beneficios concretos para que la gente tome su turno y se vacunen. Es fácil, es gratis, no tienes que esperar. Tiene las clínicas móviles y las farmacias pueden hacerlo y queremos continuar, que la gente continúe, es fácil y ayuda a todos nosotros. Yo quiero también felicitar a todos a nuestro condado por ese 62%. Todavía no estamos ahí, tenemos que llegar a 80%. Y nuestro Departamento de Salud Pública está haciendo su compartimiento, va a los farmer's markets, a los swap meets y también hay un plan de que el supervisor Labañino se pare con una jeringa y que le va a indicar de que sea... Es la primera vez que escucho eso, pero voy a hacer cualquier cosa. Pero si llegamos a ochenta, me saco la máscara, lo hago. El gobierno puede hacer tanto y la gente tiene que escuchar qué dicen los doctores, los médicos y otros miembros de la familia. Y el supervisor Harlow dijo bien, las reuniones de la familia, no hemos podido hacer eso con el día de la madre. Tuvimos un gustito de lo que nos faltaba y lo desesperado que estamos para poder reunirnos. Que los miembros de la familia sí, por favor, que le digan a esos que no han sido vacunados, por favor reciban la vacuna, porque realmente cuenta para tu familia y para tu comunidad. Supervisor Williams, sí. Mi entendimiento es que... 80% para tener inmunidad de rebaño. Hicimos un gran progreso. Estoy preocupado que no vamos a llegar, que las personas tienen que tomar decisiones diferentes de lo que están tomando. Y la decisión que tenga que hacer investigación de que Pfizer, por ejemplo, pueda ser usado por adolescentes, nos va a ayudar con respecto a eso. Una nueva población de gente que califica para la vacuna y están esperando que todos tus miembros estén listos para que todos vacunarse en el mismo lugar, es el tiempo de hacerlo. Especialmente expandiéndose con las oportunidades y que aprovechar las oportunidades de vacunarse. Este es un capítulo de la vida que todos queremos que termine. Y lo vamos a lograr cuando tengamos otros factores que aumentan o disminuyen la transmisión. De tener inmunidad de rebaño. Los Ángeles ayer ellos van a mover las fechas porque no hay demanda por las vacunas. Y nosotros tenemos que buscar la manera de que la gente se vacune. Para recuperarnos necesitamos tener más gente que se vacune. El día de la madre y no estamos hablando de un resurgimiento de casos. Durante todo el año estuvimos hablando de fiestas y resurgimiento. La vacuna funciona, las cifras bajan. Nuestra nueva cifra es 3.5. En el tablero estamos a 2.6. Vamos a ver una reducción significativa. Y yo represento mucha gente que tiene dudas de la vacuna y uno de los problemas que no hay confianza de que estas medidas de atenuación van a desaparecer. Hemos visto el estado reacciona lentamente. Y mucha gente están preocupado de que aunque estén la vacuna van a tener atados con su vida. Quince por ciento más gente de la población se vacunará si dicen que las máscaras se quitarían y eso nos llevaría a la cifra que queremos. Tenemos tener un compromiso de las autoridades a nivel estatal, de eso es lo que pasaría. Y en ese punto van a haber mayor aceptación de las vacunas en la comunidad que tienen dudas. Comentarios públicos. Una persona quiere hablar. Terry Strickland. Hable señor Strickland, estoy listo, gracias. Hace unos meses que escucho estas actualizaciones y novedades de vacunas. Es tiempo que este consejo pare avergonzar. La gente que quiere la vacuna se lo están dando y el resto de la población, por alguna razón, prefiere científico, moral, no quieren dársela vacuna. Nunca nadie se ha forzado a inyectar una medicina y alguna persona no le gusta. Todavía es Estados Unidos, si quieren, si lo quieren o lo quieren hacer, es una decisión personal. A mí no me importa creer la vacuna y si funciona no le tiene importar la casa de gente, pero que si realmente cree que funciona, ¿por qué están todos a seis pies separados con máscaras? Quítense la máscara. Pero la gente que no puede escuchar sus comentarios es una pesadiza. Creen la vacuna y quieren que paren todo el narrativo, doctor Fauci, lo que tenga la vacuna tiene que hacer distensión social y máscara. Su profesor Labañino es correcto. Esto no es una manera de exhortar a la gente que están a que se vacunen. Y dejar a los doctores dejen de decirle a la gente que pueden matar a su abuela si no cumplen con la orden de la vacuna. Los doctores de Salud Pública de los vacunadores han puesto en peligro a más abuelas que nadie y vacunar a los niños de doce años es absurdo. Todos saben que los niños no son impactados por este virus, ¿por qué están promoviendo esto? Y quítense las máscaras, que juegan deportes, es ridículo. La padre que están de que hagan investigación antes de vacunar a los niños y con respecto de va a cumplir, del condado de San Luis Obispo, asegurar a sus, de que van a apoyar, de que los ciudadanos no puedan tener servicios de acuerdo a los registros de vacuna ni van a hacer de que los negocios lo hagan también. Como ya he anotado, no digo nada sobre... Gracias por su tiempo, porque mi última, una vez un sorbés, uno nos agradezca nuestro trabajo. Me pagan para hacer esto y escuchar al público. Y que abren las oficinas, el público tiene el derecho de enfrentar a los políticos elegidos. Con respecto a inmunidad de rebaño, consideren a las personas que ya tuvieron COVID y que tengan inmunidad a esto. ¿Por qué este porcentaje solamente tiene que ser con la gente vacunada? Nunca ha sido calculado y no entiendo por qué lo que siguen haciendo. Gracias. Gracias señora Strickland. Gracias señora Strickland. Tengo una pregunta para la señora Reynosa. ¿Por qué los niños? ¿Qué sabemos sobre los beneficios de la vacuna de los niños?
Su profesor Hartman, sabemos que los niños se infectan. Tenemos cifras de gente joven en la escuela secundaria y en la escuela junio que tienen COVID-19. El beneficio de ser vacunados es que va a proteger al niño, va a proteger a la familia, va a proteger a la comunidad. Los niños pueden volver a todas las actividades sin el temor de de tener COVID o transmitir el COVID. Yo creo que las ventajas y los beneficios pesan más que perciben cualquier desventaja.
Gracias doctora Reynoso. Una vez que está, es correcto. Una vez vacunado no va a transmitir. Y también alguna de las cosas que la señora Strickland dijo, que el doctor Reyno se habló directamente sobre los vinos y fios de la vacuna y tratar de conseguir rebaño. No es lo mismo tener uno luz dura más que el otro y el doctor Reynoso puede poner ciencia en los comentarios. Correcto, lo que usted mencionó. Al ser el modelo se considera las individuos totalmente vacunados como lo que se mide la inmunidad de rebaño. La gente que estuvo infectada con COVID-19 todavía son exhortados a ser vacunados porque la fortaleza y la durabilidad de la vacuna en proteger a ese individuo de enfermedad o de transmitirlo. Gracias doctora Reynoso. Yo entiendo la frustración del comentario público, pero creo algunos de los deseos son contradictorios. Hay un grado de normalidad que la ciencia y los doctores están diciendo, podemos proceder a cierta cantidad de gente vacunada o que han contraído la enfermedad. Y no parece ser que estamos allí, ni tampoco estamos al precipicio. Creo que exhortar es peor que avergonzar. Hay que exhortar a la gente que estén haciendo algo que sea bueno para el vecindario y para la familia. Y para proteger a ellos de no contraer una enfermedad fatal. Debo agregar, es correcto, los niños pequeños, pero la investigación indica que de diez y menores tiene receptores del pulmón que todavía no están desarrollados, pero cuando cuando están adolescentes se parece más a los adultos y un adolescente puede contraer COVID y pueden contraer el COVID bajo larga exposición y los adolescentes pueden contagiarse tanto como los adultos. Y es una población que tenemos que hacer que tomen su propia decisión si van a ser vacunados, pero los exhortos que lo piensen, los riesgos son bajos. Pero tener menos gente vacunada es muy alto y exhorto a que la gente se vacune. Simpatizo con lo que dice la señora Strickland, mi comentario es la confianza entre mis electores y el gobierno y se sigue moviendo el poste. Que había que parar el contagio y volvimos a lo normal. Y después íbamos a normal a esto y es una vacuna vamos a volver a normal y ahora es inmunidad de rebaño volvemos a lo normal. Mucha gente se siente de que esto es Charlie Brown y Lucy con el fútbol. Quiero volver a lo normal, más aceptación, pero creo que en este punto hay una falta de confianza y tienen que tomar estas decisiones por sí mismos. Es una línea entre exhortar y avergonzar. Yo me di la primera dosis y no estoy avergonzando a la gente de decisión. Yo estoy cuidando un miembro de mi familia y para la seguridad de mi familia es una decisión personal que tomé. Después de trabajar con mi familia y hablando sobre esto, vamos a tomar estas decisiones por nuestra cuenta. Esta es América, tenemos que tener estas libertades si el riesgo es bajo. No quiero minimizar ninguna muerte, pero ya dos semanas sin muertes tenemos una muerte y después era por semana. Ha bajado significativamente. Esa muerte cada una cuenta, pero también quiero estar seguro que reconocemos que el riesgo ha bajado mucho y que todavía estamos viviendo con estas medidas de atenuación y seguridad. Y tan rápido como llegaron, tan rápido hay que quitarlas. Y espero que el estado nos escuche y mande esas guías. Yo no quiero usar esa máscara. Y esa es la ley que tenemos ahora y mi regla como patrón en el condado. No tengo esa elección de poner al condado al serio riesgo porque estamos potencialmente, estamos poniendo en riesgo y la ciencia que usted está de acuerdo que es un riesgo menor, pero es uno que tengo que tomarlo seriamente como parte fidiciaria del condado. Estoy pidiendo una moción. Hay moción de recibir y registrar. Se ha votado unánimamente, no hay nadie en contra, pasó unánimamente. Vamos a volver a la una de la tarde para el próximo artículo de dos. Volvemos a la una.
Compare Santa Barbara County with other nearby counties that have already authorized MECOs to assess the scope of potential community impacts. Riverside County, for instance, has a population of approximately five times the size of Santa Barbara County. They have currently permitted about 100 MECOs located across 24 different cities. In the city of Riverside itself, which is about three times the size of Santa Maria, there are 19 MECOs currently operating. Imperial County, another county that was an early adopter of MECOs, permitted, has about 16 MECOs permitted in their county. Based on these numbers, and Imperial County is a population of about half of Santa Barbara County. Based on these numbers and feedback that we've received from both Imperial and Riverside Counties, community impacts would likely be limited in scope, and EHS, we've evaluated and we have the necessary staff to conduct the inspections that would be required and to enforce MECO requirements countywide. Third, considering neighborhood impacts. While MECOs are considered a residential use for purposes of city or county's building and zoning requirements, they are not exempt from other local or state licensing or sales tax that may be applicable to a home-based business. State law has also incorporated several elements that are designed to reduce the impacts of MECOs on neighborhoods. In addition to the strictly limited number of meals that may be sold or donated by a MECO, they can also not advertise at the property, and they must comply with local ordinances such as those that limit noise, parking, and trash. Other restrictions would prohibit cooking or food preparation inside garages, backyard sheds, or other types of buildings that may be unsafe. MECOs cannot slaughter or butcher animals in their home, or make dairy products such as cheese or ice cream. And they may also not serve alcohol or allow customers to bring their own alcohol on to be consumed on the premise unless they have the appropriate licenses from the state's Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Finally, the fourth area is related to infrastructure. MECOs are subject to residential potable water, building sewer, and fire protection standards for a private residence. As part of our oversight, EHS will coordinate with other local agencies to provide appropriate education and information about the disposal of fats, oils, and greases from the home, fire safety, or other building permit requirements. This may include establishing best management practices for MECOs to control fats, oils, and greases, as specifically requested by the Carpinteria Sanitary District, along with notification to wastewater utilities when MECOs are permitted, so they are aware of where these are located for potential evaluation of impacts to sewer systems. We anticipate these actions will be supported and also help sanitary districts mitigate potential impacts to their sewer systems. Additionally, during inspections, EHS will be evaluating the MECO's home kitchen equipment to ensure that it supports safe food preparation, and that barbecues and wood-fired ovens are located in an area that does not create a fire hazard. Next slide, please. It should also be noted that EHS does already permit and inspect a variety of home-based kitchen operations countywide, such as cottage food operations and bed and breakfasts. Cottage food operations, for example, are able to prepare low-risk food for direct and indirect sale from a home kitchen. There's approximately 292 of these permitted locally in Santa Barbara County at this time, with 39 of them being annually inspected, and so environmental health is capable and aware of how to manage these home-based kitchen operations at this point. Several of these businesses, just note, have also graduated to commercial retail food or wholesale business models after achieving success as a startup cottage food operation. If the Board of Supervisors approves MECOs today, this ordinance, it would add an additional home-based business opportunity for aspiring local entrepreneurs. It would provide a pathway for home kitchen operations to operate legally and safely, and would be supportive of food safety for community members that these businesses serve. Next slide, please. To enact the proposed ordinance authorizing microenterprise home kitchen operations in Santa Barbara County, EHS staff recommends the board take the following action items: First, consider and approve the adoption, second, reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Article 3, entitled County Retail Food Code into the Santa Barbara County Code. And secondly, find that the ordinance is exempt from secret review and direct staff to file a notice of exemption. The ordinance itself would take effect 30 days following this action, and EHS would be prepared to implement the permitting provisions of the MECO ordinance at that time, about roughly about mid-June is when that would take effect. Next slide, please. We'd like to thank you for your time today, and we are certainly available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. Questions from the board? Supervisor Levanyo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lars, I have a question about enforcement. So I'm curious how this works with, well, let's just take the existing, the way it's working right now. I'm getting feedback. That's hard to deal with. Is it okay now? Okay. So in today's world, let's talk about inside the cities. So for example, City of Santa Maria. So is it their code enforcement, or is it our environmental health that is out looking for folks that are, you know, doing this unpermitted at this point? How does that all shake out?
Supervisor Levanyo through the chair. Currently, in the City of Santa Maria, the City of Santa Maria code enforcement is the initial enforcement agency that would respond to complaints such as, you know, inappropriate or unpermitted activity within a residence of the city. Those are then referred over to the Public Health Department, Environmental Health Services, and our next action would be to proceed with directing that operator to cease operations because they were unpermitted food, retail food operations. If MECOs were a permitted activity, then there's also additional opportunities for enforcement under unfair business practices and other aspects that are currently not in place because they're not a permitted activity. So that would be another tool that potentially the county would have at some point in time if they were operating an unpermitted business. Currently, the approach would be to direct them to cease operations, and violations of the California Retail Food Code are a misdemeanor offense.
So do you have any idea, like historically, like over the last year? The last year's a little difficult because of COVID, but how many of these get referred to EHS from the different cities currently?
Supervisor Levanyo through the chair. I don't have that number for you today, however, it is a small, it is a very small number, probably only a handful of complaints that are referred over to Public Health Department from the cities.
Okay. So the other thing I'm struggling with is how this pays for itself. So if the, if the, if the, if the permit's like $390, and then I know that there's some other things they have to do to get approved, the annual permit's $390, and you said like in a city of Riverside, I thought you said, it was like there's 19 or 20 of them? So that's only really generating like $7,500. So how do we, how does that pay for anybody to go out and actually do these things?
Supervisor Levanyo, I think that's the challenge of any local enforcement agency when there's not a revenue, given that we're a regulatory permit, you know, driven agency. Currently, because there's no annual health permit revenue coming in, obviously, the resources for conducting that enforcement is, is very limited. With the, with the annual permit fee, basically, that's been established to then also account for some staffing time associated with enforcement follow-up as well. So that would be the additional revenue to cover hopefully the services of both permitting and any necessary enforcement action associated with it.
All right. Thank you very much, Lars.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Levanyo. Any other supervisors with questions? Supervisor Hart.
All right. First, I just want to compliment Mr. Seifert on a really exceptionally clear and to-the-point staff presentation. That was really excellent. We got a letter from an insurance broker who alleges that it'd be very difficult to insure these kind of operations. I know that's not really the county's responsibility, but I wonder if you have any insight into that issue.
Supervisor Williams, at Environmental Health Services, I don't have any comments to respond to that. We don't deal with the insurance aspects. I don't know if County Council has any comments they'd like to provide.
Mr. Gazoni?
Chair and Supervisors, I've looked at the letter, and I don't have any comments other than, it's a broad market out there. So I don't know whether that's a universal truth or limited to a particular area of the insurance business.
Thank you. And if Supervisor Hart doesn't mind, I'll follow up on that and just, I guess the question is, is it possible for us, or is it a requirement, that we require MECOs to have insurance? Is that, is that something that could be a part of the ordinance? I don't know who that question's for, whether it's for Mr. Seifert or Mr. Gazoni.
Chair and Supervisors, I think this is an area where the board, as the governing body of the Public Health Department, has broad discretion at the top of this issue, which is go or no-go for authorizing microenterprise home kitchen operations. After that, and that's under one portion of the Health and Safety Code, after that, your discretion is very limited, including unable to impose any other restriction. So it really is a classic opt-in or don't opt-in with no ability to really change that framework.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gazoni. Supervisor Hart, any additional?
I guess maybe just to that point, perhaps in the training and education portion of this effort, the Environmental Health Services could at least point that issue out to the operators and say, you know, this is something that's important and that you should shop aggressively for getting insurance coverage.
Supervisor Levanyo.
One more question then from Mr. Gazoni. So when you say opt-in or opt-out, so there is, there's really no provision that the county would be able to opt-in, like in the unincorporated area, but not in the incorporated?
Chair and Supervisors, that's, that's correct. It is for the entire county area with no ability to sliver, for example, unincorporated from particular cities with a yes/no.
All right. Any other supervisors have any questions? Seem, and I have a couple additional questions. Mr. Seifert, on slide number three, if we can go back to that slide, and add the examples of MECOs. I was somewhat troubled by this slide that it seems to imply a couple hosting cooking classes in a supper club at their home, or church members preparing meals for people experiencing homelessness, that that somehow would require a permit. And could you speak to that? Because I wouldn't consider those activities necessary to have a permit.
Supervisor, Chair Nelson, to your question, I think the, I'll start with the most important one and probably the most poignant, the church members preparing meals. There are some provisions for limited service charitable feeding operations in which a church can prepare meals at a church kitchen, provided there's some safe guardrails in place. It's mainly a sort of a reheat and of prepared meals for service to those experiencing houselessness. They would not be able to have someone prepare meals in their home kitchen, bring them, and then basically take them to a homeless community, or distribute those in a charitable feeding operation. That's, that is currently not allowed under the California Retail Food Code. With respect to the couple hosting cooking classes in a supper club at their home, again, this gets into a question of whether it is a retail versus a private function. Private functions, just for clarity, are not subject to the California Retail Food Code and regulation. However, if it is a business activity in which they're basically have paying members or a club sort of situation in which people are paying for that service, then there is a provision, well, there's provisions in the California Retail Food Code to require permitting and that it's overseen so that that food is safe, that's being prepared to the public.
So going back to the church, I guess that's where I'm, the retail component of a church, I don't, I don't imagine any church is going to be charging for those meals. So that would still require a permit?
Yeah, it actually requires a, if food is donated to the public, there's also that requirement to have a permit and that it's prepared safely. So it's, it's given to the public, prepared and given to the public, or sold to the public.
So given or sold, there's no distinction there?
No.
I think that's significant overreach, but I guess that might be the law that we're faced with. Currently, my understanding is that we're not issuing temporary food licenses. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair Nelson.
So how's that different? You know, why is that unsafe, but a MECO would be safe to move forward during the pandemic?
Chair Nelson, members of the board, I think the distinction here is that the temporary food facility permit limitation right now is associated with community events and restrictions on state guidance to hold those community events. We are hoping that we can get additional state guidance to allow and begin permitting temporary food facilities in the near future. We are actively engaging the state on that issue. The church then is sort of a separate question, and that is not restricted currently by COVID, but then would be actually those restrictions would be within the California Retail Food Code specifically.
Okay. And I am also intrigued by the letter by the insurance agent. I believe that, you know, that, you know, if we're supposed to be looking at these MECOs and trying to protect the public, that that would be a significant piece of it that might be missing under the current ordinance. So I guess it's more for comments for later. But thank you, Mr. Seifert. I believe we have quite a few public speakers. If there's no additional questions from my colleagues, we'd like to go to public comment.
Yes, Chair Nelson and members of the board, we have 17 requests to speak, and 14 are currently logged into our Zoom meeting. So if you are a member of the public and you have registered to provide public comment on departmental item number two, microenterprise home kitchen, please log in now to do so.
All right. Madam Clerk? Oh, yeah.
And we will begin with Andy Caldwell, to be followed by Peter Ruttick.
Chair Nelson, members of the board, Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. I think that the staff presentation that not too many people would apply for this cuts both ways. If not too many people would apply, why bother risking the impacts to the sewer and the neighborhoods and public health for unlicensed food service businesses? Because they would be unlicensed, or uninsured anyway. Excuse me for that. You know, the other thing about enforcement, they're not enforcing it right now. The mayor of Santa Maria and others have testified that their code enforcement officers are having to go after these people all the time, and the Public Health Department is scarcely lifting a finger to help them. So they already have MECOs, and they're not enforcing it. The other point is food safety is food safety. Why do they require certain things in commercial kitchens but not in these home kitchens? If it's science-based, then there's a risk there of not having a commercial-grade kitchen. The other thing that we just can't fathom, and I say this in all sincerity, we can't fathom that your board shut down events and you shut down vacation rentals when most of that thing is built around food. It's not the sleeping arrangements, it's the party. So you'd shut down events and ordinance and the rent, vacation rentals because of impacts to neighborhoods, but then you would license a business? Do you know how easy it would be to get around the $50,000 annual food limit on income? The bottom line, getting to Supervisor Levanyo's point, this is going to impact cities, and the county's not going to be there for 300 bucks a year. More importantly, this department is 100% fee-funded. So what they don't get out of these home-based kitchens, other businesses are going to be supplementing and augmenting this budget. So in essence, you're going to charge a restaurant extra money so that they, you can give their competition a basically a free ride. I don't, again, neighborhood impacts are neighborhood impacts. Food safety, science is food safety, science. We don't support this. We're all for entrepreneurialism, but not with this kind of unlevel playing field and risk to public health. It absolutely makes no sense. And again, if there's not very many people to apply, why bother? Especially when a couple of city councils have said, we don't want this. You need to be there to serve the cities, not lord it over them.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. At this time, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We have quite a few speakers lining up and want to make sure everybody gets a proper amount of time to speak on this.
We will now go to Peter Ruttick, to be followed by Mayor Alice Patino of Santa Maria.
Mr. Ruttick, when you're ready.
Mr. Ruttick, it appears you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. If you are providing comments.
Hello?
Now, now we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
I think I'm, I think I'm live. Thank you. Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Peter Ruttick. I am the Policy Director for the Cookalots. We are, we're the sponsors of AB 626 and the co-sponsors of A377, along with author Assemblyman Garcia in the state legislature. We are big supporters of small food businesses. We started out as supporters particularly of MECOs and home cooks, but we support all independent businesses. We are co-sponsors of the current bill AB 1140 Florida Stand Cottage Food. We are great fans and supporters of local independent restaurants, whom we don't think there is much competition for in MECO, some obviously. I'm not going to repeat everything I put in my letter. I want to address a couple of issues. One is regarding insurance. It's an interesting statement because cottage food operators, of which there are thousands, I've never heard one who's had a problem getting insurance. And the couple of hundred MECOs in the counties that are permitting them now are not having problems either. This is a very insurable business in my experience. The thing I particularly would like to address today has to do with the city code enforcement, something that is a real concern, something that we take seriously, but I think the opponents of this are misanalyzing the problem, and they're afraid of a certain amount of change. We can break down the MECOs into three groups. There are the ones who aren't cooking yet because they won't do anything illegal. They're the ones who will first apply for a permit. They are not intentionally going to be a nuisance. They're going to be correctable if they're accidentally a nuisance. There are those who are cooking currently, who would like to have a permit and for some reason go anyway. And they too will get education when they get a permit, and they will be correctable in their nuisance issues. There is a group who doesn't care about a permit now, won't care about one in the future, will keep cooking with or without a law. Prohibition as a way to address these concerns never works if we prohibit the two well-behaved groups. We will bias in favor of the group that is less well-behaved. It is better to regulate, educate, and correct. In fact, what we're seeing, and there is much change in code enforcement costs, period, but there is a slight decrease in cost in the cities in Riverside and other counties because there are more well-behaved people. As I said, we're strong proponents of this. We applaud Santa Barbara for coming so far. We strongly encourage you to adopt the ordinance and to create a more resilient local food economy and a stronger community in your county.
Thank you, Mr. Ruttick.
Thank you.
We will now go to Mayor Alice Patino, to be followed by Akshay Prabhu.
Madam Mayor, when you're ready.
Okay. Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to urge you not to approve the ordinance allowing the microenterprise home kitchen operations. You know, I've been in business in this town for over 30 years, and I know what, and I support entrepreneurs, but I think people have their head in the sky if they think that this is what this is all about. The EPA codified the Code of Federal Regulations controlling the fats, oils, and grease in public-owned treatment plants, which are wastewater plant and sewer collection system gets, gets there. The discharges from the food establishments requiring each public-owned treatment plant to control the pollutants. This is not going to be required for the MECOs. The most common cause of the blockages are from grease, and that's like 47%, from grease, from restaurants, homes, and industrial resources. The EPA is not going to come after the homeowner or the resident, but they will come after the City of Santa Maria for the violation. We have so many old sewer lines in the city right now, we can't even build in some places because the dense housing, the lines couldn't handle the capacity. The pre-treatment program, which we are required to have and have implemented, and which we now inspect commercial programs, we know there are kitchens out there going on, and we can tell from the backups in the high-density areas. Now, we will not be able to regulate causing more sewer backups in our highest-density areas. When the sewer lines back up, we have residents and homes that are affected. These also occur in apartments. The woman that said that she cooks for homeless or for people who can't cook for themselves, I do that all the time with our Rotary Group, I do it with Good Samaritan Shelter, our H2A Housing, they are required to provide food for their farm workers, and we have many charitable groups that do the same thing. On the clean water side, a backflow valve is required in many businesses and restaurants being run to protect our water, and we will not have the ability to check for backflow valves. Are you aware how this affects our city water? We recently passed an ordinance regulating mobile car washes just to protect the water that goes down the storm drains. Water is a prized commodity in our county. We've asked public health on many instances. A lot of the time, the stuff doesn't get to public health because our own code enforcement takes care of it because public health has not responded in the City of Santa Maria numerous times. We have corn vendors out here they've not responded to, and some of those cans that these corn vendors carry the corn in have been found to have urine in them. Now, this can, this, when this comes down as a mandate, and you all know because you're sitting there, you've been on councils, this is a burden on our taxpayers because mandates without resources, and that's exactly what it's going to be because it's going to be a big hit on our compliance people. This is not really necessary. Why are we being the guinea pigs? We don't know the effect of it really until we have the whole problem.
Thank you, Madam.
And what is the urgency? There is no urgency to do this. There's no economic urgency, and there is no food urgency now that restaurants can reopen. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We will now go to Akshay Prabhu, to be followed by Alvin Selehi.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Thanks for having me. My name's Akshay Prabhu, and I am a home cook and activist, and I've had the privilege over the last two years of working with home cooks in the Riverside Program. And I just wanted to, you know, comment on a few things that the mayor said that, you know, we've had over two years of data from Riverside County, which is on the public record, that there has been zero increase in record, that there has been zero increase in, you know, sewage blockup due to these Mico operations. You know, this is just the data from another county. And, you know, in addition to that, these vendors are all being trained and certified food managers, just like any other restaurateur with a week-long training and certification course. The main measure of prevention at the end of the day is education. You can't stop someone from pouring something down the drain, but you can tell them that that's a bad thing to do. And, you know, this is more training than any of the other homes in the, in the county have, have really gotten so far. So, you know, it's a great preventative measure to provide public knowledge and education. Second, I wanted to address the taxpayer burden aspect. Each one of these Micos is an official business, being issued a business license from the city. So, you know, they pay a sales tax and they report to the CDTFA. A lot of these vendors want to be legitimate businesses, you know? It's really hard, there's very little lack of commercial kitchen space, and it costs over $300,000 to start a brick and mortar. And so this is a great stepping stone and an opportunity. You can see this as almost a small business loan to support a lot of mom-and-pop restaurants. A number of the restaurants that we've gotten to work with in, in Southern California are actually small restaurateurs that, you know, needed to start over with, you know, lower overheads. So, you know, it's a really great way to spur small business and increase opportunity. And, you know, these cooks are, at the end of the day, you know, they are the face of their business. They're putting a lot of love and care into what they're doing. And we've seen zero food safety illness reports to date. And, you know, this can really come from the fact that they are owning their business. You know, if, if someone gets sick, it's, you know, it's their bottom line that's going to be affected. And so, you know, that, Santa Barbara would be following in the footsteps of, you know, this is, Alameda County has passed as long as, as well as seven other counties within the state, and, you know, there's legislation in Utah and Washington State going as well. So, you know, this is a program that's being widely considered and accepted, and Santa Barbara can be at the forefront of this in, you know, really doing something that's really great for home cooks. And I'll let the rest of my time go. But thank you all for being here and considering this.
We will now go to Alvin Salehi to be followed by Terry Strickland.
Thank you so much for your time today, and I appreciate all the words that Akshay said as well, and I completely agree with his testimony as well. My name is Alvin Salehi. I previously served as a White House policymaker under President Obama, and I'm now the co-founder of Chef, which is a homemade food community that's working hard to help put people back to work after the pandemic. I'm testifying today in strong support of allowing micro enterprise home kitchen operations in Santa Barbara County. Frankly, implementing these operations, in my opinion, is incredibly important and also means a lot to me personally. I, just by way of background, grew up in a motel in Southern California. My parents immigrated from Iran in the 1970s, and they worked incredibly hard, like many immigrants, to build a better life for their children. They actually used to run a restaurant when I was a kid. But as, as many of you can imagine, on a good day, they were barely able to break even. The commercial overhead costs were just way too high, and ultimately, they had to shut down the restaurant, and it was such a painful experience for our family. I remember wishing there was something we could have done to help them avoid that outcome. And frankly, it's clear that if Micos had existed back then, it could have changed their lives forever. Candidly, I, I venture to say that this is a lifeline. As we all know, the need for economic opportunity is more pressing now than it's ever been, particularly for communities of color who've been disproportionately impacted by COVID. As far as our platform is concerned, 92% of the cooks that we're working with are people of color and 83% are women. And some of the stories of our cooks, quite honestly, are heartbreaking. We have a cook in California who hasn't had a job in four years and has two kids at home, and with the money she's earned selling homemade food, she's been able to pay off all her debts. Another cook was laid off during the pandemic, like many folks. But when she started selling her food, she was able to afford a haircut, something as basic as a haircut, for the first time in six months. And finally, we had a cook who brought me to tears a couple of months ago. She was facing homelessness following the pandemic, like many people have. But with the money she earned selling food, she was able to make rent and avoid being put out on the streets. The final thing that I'll say here is, we all know that selling home-cooked food has actually been happening informally for a long time through Facebook Marketplace, Instagram, Craigslist, WhatsApp, Nextdoor. But these are operations that aren't being regulated. So for those of you, of you who are concerned about food safety, please hear me when I say this, introducing and implementing well-informed regulations is actually safer than doing nothing at all and allowing unregulated home cooking to continue in its current form. We want to work together with you to help lift home cooks out of the shadows and actually give them the opportunity to feed their communities legally and safely. And honestly, if not now, I'm not sure when. Chair Nelson, you said it best when you mentioned overreach. The fact that individuals aren't even able to donate food to people in need is a clear signal that we need to do something. And I think we can all agree that your constituents desperately need help after the pandemic. And I really believe that we need to come together as a community to help put people back to work. So my sincere thanks to Chair Nelson, all of the esteemed supervisors for taking the time to consider this today. Allowing micro enterprise home kitchen operations in San Barbara County could be incredibly impactful and help so many people, and I really appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
And I wish you all continued health and safety. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Terry Strickland to be followed by Roberta Thompson.
Chair Nelson and board members, the purpose of this bill, and I quote, "According to the author, many of its constituents have expressed their concerns and frustrations trying to work in compliance with the existing overly complicated cottage food laws." The author states that "this measure aims to knock down barriers and expand opportunities for marginalized populations who often lack access to the professional food world," end quote. No one knows better than current business owners that government regulations are difficult, expensive, and overly complicated. But here's the thing, when this bill passed the state legislature, it had substantial opposition, and for good reasons. The California State Association of Counties, Urban Counties of California, Rural County Representatives of California, County Health Executives Association of California, and Health Officers Association of California, some and all of these groups that our county belongs to, all oppose this bill because of concerns about the preparation of potentially hazardous foods in home kitchens. These opponents stated that when food is purchased by the public, they expect it has been prepared within a legal framework to prevent pathogens. Additionally, they argued that this bill broadens the existing cottage food law in a way that would put the public at risk. Furthermore, the operation of these enterprises in residential neighborhoods raises a host of other issues, some of you've already heard, trash, parking noise, wastewater septicizing, American With Disabilities Act, insurance issues. As far as insurance, the county may not be concerned about insurance. But if you okay this, the folks may not, that you, that you let have these Micos may not be able to acquire insurance, or worse, if I'm a landlord and a tenant opens a restaurant in my property I own, my insurance company may not insure me. And honestly, you need to answer to your constituents, not out-of-town activists. But here's a solution. Why not encourage these home chefs to rent space in a commercial kitchen or restaurant, as has been done for decades? With the last year being so devastating to the restaurant industry, there are probably many of them that could use the extra money by renting out their kitchens when not in use by them. Many restaurants are now closed one or two days a week, a perfect opportunity for a home chef to come into a licensed, licensed clean facility and prepare their food. A win-win for both. I would encourage you not to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
We will now go to Roberta Thompson to be followed by Tracy Baird.
Good afternoon. My name is Roberta Thompson, and I live in the Santa Maria city limits. I am the Santa Barbara County lead for the advocacy group Cook Alliance. I encourage Santa Barbara County to opt into AB 626. My personal plan is to cook nutritious meals for senior citizens who live in local mobile home parks. Many of these folks are unable to cook for themselves. Meals will be personally delivered to these residents by me. The name of the business will be called Chef's Pick of the Day. If permitted, the county will help to build healthy, resilient communities and create economic opportunities for the people who need them the most. Cooks from underserved communities, primarily women, immigrants, and people of color, can now use their skills to generate extra income or incubate a new food enterprise. Without the fear of fines, many existing home cooks will now be able to openly access business education and training on safe food handling practices. Finally, if permitted, this will help consumers and improve public health standards. Home food operations must be inspected by local health inspectors, and operators must follow a set of health, training, and sanitation standards just like any other food facility. For these reasons, I support the implementation of AB 626 in our county. Thank you for your leadership in helping bring this opportunity to cooks and their communities.
We will now go to Tracy Baird to be followed by Dee Karisosa.
Good afternoon, Chair Nelson and supervisors. The Southern Chamber of Commerce is opposing the micro enterprise home kitchen operation known as Micos, Micos. Ordinants being considered by the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. The reason for opposing this ordinance is local city impacts, impact to local service to each community on wastewater treatment service centers to our community, sewer, has no fire suppression required or requirements to mitigate the increase of grease production, which will increase a greater risk of fires and sewer overflows. We have an EPA standard right now that says restaurants must discharge fats, oils, and grease. It is a national EPA that was talked about earlier. The net, it's called the National Pretreatment Program. We ask that we follow this. I ask you there for an environmental impact report to our community. How is this terminated exemption from our CEQA in Section B that you explained to the public? Please explain why we don't have to have a CEQA within this community. Strict guidelines, regulations, cost to the existing restaurants. Restaurants are not afraid of competition, they're worried about safety. We follow strict safety. The health departments find in Santa Barbara County during the pandemic loss of thousands of dollars. We have protocols on safety and customer, unlike any other Mico operator that's, how do we know they're throwing the food out? How do we know that when it was prepared? We don't know these things, and you're not there to, to monitor these, I want to say, new restaurants or micro restaurants. City enforcement, this is a big impact to our gated communities, beachfront communities, to our local neighborhoods. Cities are required to spend so much more money than we have. And right now, we all know our city's been impacted everywhere. This is a definite public health outcry to say, please, we really want you to make sure you table this vote and you look at this very differently. I have talked with our local resources. We have example, Buellton Senior Center, Pam Nico says, can offer a commercial kitchen to teach. We have Allen Hancock, SBC City College. We have churches that just became local certified commercial kitchens in our community that are willing to help to feed the poor. We know this is a problem. I can tell you, coming from the restaurant business at Marriott, when poor habits are already taught, they will never make them better and that. So I just say to you, very much consider the impact to your communities, very much so, and we need to say stop this. I respect every one of you.
Thank you, Ms. Baird, that is your time. We will now go to Dee Karisosa to be followed by Zenia Bradford.
Good afternoon, Chair Nelson and board members. You know, I'm here just to speak briefly on the availability of commercial kitchens and finding those available. I've gone through the process, and fortunately, I was lucky enough to find a commercial kitchen. And I have been able to, and since day one, have insurance through a company that provides for caterers. You know, there's so many, so much need for people who are under provision, just don't have that option to feed themselves, that it was really great to be able to start a business and, and do it from home until we were able to find the commercial kitchens again. But just to say, it, it was really difficult, and I want to support everybody who is continuing to try to do that. And maybe if the commercial kitchens would put something up where they could show a local availability, that might help. And then again, just information on where to obtain insurance, because in fact, it is out there. It's just a matter of knowing the path to get there, and maybe that's just a good education for everybody. And again, this is coming from somebody who went through the process and started it even before the pandemic, and just the difficulty in finding that on my own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We will now go to Zenia Bradford to be followed by Griffin Hall.
Can hear me, and I am city manager with the City of Solving. I'm speaking on behalf of the City of Solving Council. You should have received a letter from the council in opposition of the micro enterprise home kitchen operations. The city council has a number of concerns. The City of Solving is very dependent on tourism economy, and our number one concern is support of existing infrastructure and our existing restaurants. The view and look of the neighborhoods is also very important. We believe that this would be undue hardship imposed on the city, that you should not be opting in into this ordinance. We also are concerned with code enforcement efforts, that this would all fall onto the city rather than the county, and the cities are really more impacted by this ordinance than unincorporated area. We think that enforcement will be almost impossible, and this regulation is unnecessary. Other concerns are also with the sewer collection system and the negative impact. The home enterprise, enterprise home kitchen operations would have a definite negative impact on our sewer collection system, lift stations, and wastewater treatment plant. Restaurants in town must have grease interceptors, which prevent the majority of the fats, oils, and grease. They generate from reaching the sewer system and wastewater treatment plant. Fog creates big problems in our sewer collection system, lift stations, and wastewater treatment plant. Commercial home kitchen operations will generate significant amounts of fog without having grease interceptors. This will create significant additional work in cleaning our sewer lines and lift stations and treatment problems at wastewater treatment plant. Other concerns are with the fact that Health and Safety Code, Section 114367.1, provides that Mico are subject to all of the applicable requirements of the California Retail Food Code, but then goes on to list 25 provisions from which Mico are exempt. 21 of these 25 provisions that Mico do not need to follow have to do with ensuring health and safety of the customers and employees of establishment. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford.
We will now go to Griffin Hall to be followed by Isaac O'Leary.
Hello, good afternoon. I hope you can all hear me. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate you hearing my perspective on this issue. I urge you to pass this measure because it is very near and dear to my heart. I grew up in Santa Maria, attended Santa Maria High School, class of 2011. Now I live in Santa Barbara. I work on a local exotic fruit ranch. So I've seen a lot of different kinds of people who are foodies, from wealthy families to poorer families, and food is a uniting factor in this community. I think that this, having home restaurants encourages people who normally don't have the capital to start restaurants, to follow their dreams, and to become involved and do something that gives pride for themselves and their community. It's a way to engage young entrepreneurs and to foster economic growth. I don't think it will be a competition for the restaurant industry because people are looking for a variety of experiences when dining out. I think that the same I think that the same kind of people who go to restaurants will also frequent home restaurants and they can develop an appreciation of both. Um, I would just like to say that my friend Gabriella from high school, her mother made the best tamales in Santa Maria and she always wanted to be a home cook, but she had to work in the fields and she didn't have enough money to start her own restaurant. I'm sure there are thousands of these stories across the county and across the state of people who are looking to follow their dreams. And especially coming off of a pandemic, we need to give them opportunities to follow their dreams, to put pride into their community. So again, I urge you to pass this measure. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
We will now go to Isaac O'Leary to be followed by Roya Bagary.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. Thank you so much for holding this vote today and for listening to our public comments. My name is Isaac O'Leary and through our organization Foodnom.com, we have supported more than 100 chefs through getting their MECOS in Riverside County and have seen the unbelievable positive impact of the MECO program firsthand. I'm here to say to urge you to vote yes and permit MECOS in Santa Barbara County today. I'd like to start off by addressing a few points for those opposing these permits. You know, it's been stated repeatedly that these home kitchens will be, you know, the death of restaurants teetering on failure post pandemic. You know, I would counter to that point by saying home kitchens are not the enemy of the restaurant industry. They are an accessible entry point for everyday citizens of Santa Barbara County to test their food service concept and eventually achieve their dreams of building a brick and mortar restaurant here in Santa Barbara County. An opposition letter states that one in six independent restaurants have closed since COVID. What better way to help these food professionals get back on their feet than allowing them to apply their culinary expertise from their home kitchen? Multiple chefs I've worked with in getting their MECOS in Riverside have secured investors and grants to build their brick and mortar restaurant only because of their MECO. Some of these very same chefs will have their grand opening this summer. Um, to the opponents of MECOs citing health and safety concerns, I respond with the fact that the MECO program is not new. And in fact, we have actual numbers on this program's implementation in Riverside County that prove its safety. After more than 100 chefs been permitted and more than 50,000 meals sold, there have been zero foodborne illness cases from permitted MECOs to date, nor any food safety complaints. These cooks are the face of their business, serving food made with the same care that they are serving their family. Additionally, they are serving from their homes. If having your customers don't know, if, if having your customers know where you live isn't an incentive for maintaining public safety, I don't know what is. Regarding infrastructure and nuisance complaints, uh, these MECO cooks have every incentive for proper grease disposal. You know, a chef will have their own home sewage system destroyed long before there are any impacts on public sewers. MECOs are actually required to submit their standard operating procedures for health department review, including a plan for grease disposal. I can assure you, as I've seen with my own eyes, that not one permitted MECO is dumping grease down their own drain. Uh, the same data from Riverside MECO rollout holds true for nuisance as well. With tens of thousands of meals sold, there have been zero public nuisance complaints from MECOs in Riverside County. So there really won't be additional pressure on local enforcement. Um, you know, MECOs have been proven to be safe for public health. They have not disturbed the peace in residential neighborhoods and they're very clearly a powerful tool for economic development in Santa Barbara County. I encourage the Board of Supervisors to extend this incredible opportunity to home cooks and low income people of color, really, you know, stay at home moms, regular folks in our working class folks in Santa Barbara County for whom these permits would actually be a life-changing opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Leary.
We will now go to Roya Bagary to be followed by Marl Infante.
Chair Nelson, members of the board, I'm an attorney and food advocate in support of the implementation of MECOs. Home cooks have long supplemented their communities' access to nutritious multicultural foods. As a part of my legal practice with the low-income community, I have been approached by a number of individuals who have been operating under, underground as home cooks in order to support their families, especially during this difficult economic time. These home cooks, most commonly women and people of color, are seeking the opportunity to operate their businesses legally. COVID-19 has widely impacted the food industry and MECOs are a way for individuals to be proactive in gaining financial independence, supporting the economy, and securing health and safety standards during the pandemic. Permitted MECOs are needed now in order to aid with pandemic recovery. This permitting system will legitimize existing underground home cook operations and ensure proper food safety standards through mandatory training, inspection, and education. In fact, we have strong evidence of the potential success because there have been no reports of food safety complaints from counties that have been issuing MECO permits, as highlighted by the previous speaker. I urge you to empower the members of the Santa Barbara community and legitimize their ongoing operations by approving the adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go to Mark Infante to be followed by Carlos Esco Beddo.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mark Infante. I live in Solvang. I am on the city council. You've heard from our city managers a few minutes ago. I wanted to make a couple of additional comments. My concern, I am against the MECOs to start off with, let's make that clear. Um, most of the comments that I've heard that are anti, I agree with. There's a couple of other comments that from a city point of view, I'm concerned with. Even Mr. Seifert said that there's, there's going to be code enforcement in certain situations. Anytime a neighbor wants to complain, they're going to call the city. The city is going to get a code enforcement person. We are going to spend money and yet we get no revenue out of this. This is an issue from that point of view, as well as fire, safety, security, everything involved with this MECO is going to cost my city money in order to support and we're going to get no reimbursement for it at all. I would like to recommend that we not pass the MECO's resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Infante.
And our final speaker is Carlos Esco Beddo. And Carlos, if you can unmute yourself and please provide your comments. Carlos, are you available to unmute yourself?
There he is.
Hello?
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilman, when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. We can hear you, Carlos. Go ahead.
Hello?
Carlos, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you.
Carlos, are you available to unmute yourself?
Yes. Hello? Perfect. Yeah, uh, hello, uh, Board of, uh, County Supervisors. My name is Carlos Esco Beddo. I'm city, city council on the city of Santa Maria for the first district. And I've been looking, I've been looking into, following this issue for the, for the next weeks or so. And there are some concerns that were, that I have. One, it's a part of enforcement. How will you keep track of the $50,000 limit? You mentioned that they need to, to share that information and, but how, how do you do it when you pay with cash? How do you keep track that the limit of, uh, how would you keep track of everybody producing the food? You said it's a limit. But that's one. And secondly, uh, the, the city, this will get on their, as was mentioned before, we're going to be the ones who are going to be called if somebody complains. And the third, it's, um, the onsite consumption. So by having, uh, as it was mentioned, a small restaurant in the neighborhood, that will bring one of the main concerns that my constituents have, that is the lack of parking. So people will be able to stay there and then it will bring more issues. So those are, that's, that part, the onsite consumption and the enforceability and, and us, the city, being the ones that will have to deal with that part because we're the first ones that they're going to be calling. So those, those are my concerns and I definitely would like to invite the, the board to, to look into those. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And that was our final speaker.
All right. Back to the board. Additional comments, discussion?
It pays to go last, so I will go first. Um, so, okay. Here's, here's some of the problems that I see with it. First off, I don't remember who it was, somebody made the point that short-term rentals made us money and we decided that those were businesses inside of neighborhoods. They were commercial entities operating in a residential zone. So we decided they were going to have some severe restrictions and rejected in many areas. This is the exact opposite, although very, it's similar, but we make an opposite decision. So this one costs us money. It is also a business inside a residential zone and that's why I'm also looking at this one with a jaundice eye. A lot of people brought up the idea that this is an avenue for people that are pulling themselves up from the bootstraps that, as one talked about, which, by the way, your story was awesome and I would like to meet you, the person that was raised in the motel, talking about somebody that couldn't afford a haircut, somebody that's homeless, that person, I find it very hard to believe that that person is then going to turn around, go into our planning and development department and spend close to 1,500 bucks coming up with a plan review process, written standard operating procedures, um, and paying the $391 fee, when the penalty for not doing that is that they simply shut you down. Um, I would venture to guess that there are hundreds of MECOs in existence in Santa Maria. I have friends that sell pies. I have friends that actually barbecue and sell it. I have friends that make cookies and those types of things. I don't see any of those people, in fact, I called a few of them. I was like, okay, I'm very curious. Because I think there is something about, talking about taking people out of the shadows and making them legitimate. So I said, hey, what, what, how would you guys deal with this? What would you do? First question is, well, how much does it cost? And I'm like, well, it's $391 permit fee, 200 something other dollars here, $161 an hour for planning development to review your, your deal, which could take three or four hours, plus then they got to come out to your house. And they're like, well, what's the cost if I get caught doing this? I'm like, well, there really is no, they would probably shut you down at that point. First off, nobody was interested in, in, in getting involved. Number two was, I said, some of the other requirements are, for example, you can only make $50,000, which for them, the, the value wasn't that much. But like one of them told me, I, I mean, I've got people Venmoing me. I do everything in cash. I, there's, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not keeping receipts and I'm not going to go into a system that's going to kind of force me down that path. The other side of this is 85 to 90% of my district is the city of Santa Maria. They've weighed in consistently in opposition. The main thing for me is it's just not enforceable, period. There's just no way to enforce this unless we also say at budget time, we're going to set aside half a million dollars to make this thing work. Uh-oh, CO just, no, don't do that. But that's the reality. You know, the hard thing about cannabis was I always tell people, the cannabis industry would have been very easy to regulate if there was no cannabis in existence before we started. So if we wrote in ordinance and we just said, okay, this is the way it is, you got to start at A and you leave at Z, we would have had a super clean process. This is the same way. There's all these people already doing this activity and now we're going to come in and go, hey, we need you guys to fall under this thing. You're going to have the, the dues, the people that do it and the people that don't. And then it's, okay, is that fair? Who are you enforcing against? Who aren't you enforcing it? The same things we hear about cannabis are going to hear about this. How would you know if somebody's cooking for friends? You know, that, that then they collect it later or, I mean, it's, it's just these layers of enforcement that just seem like impossible to track. Um, I think most of these people are doing these things for this, for the same thing, to make a little bit of extra money. And they're going to continue to do it regardless if we have a MECO's plan or we don't have one. About the insurance question, hasn't really been answered yet. That, that, that's also something significant. Um, as a property owner myself, if somebody, a landlord, if my renter was doing it, how would I know if he's doing it? Would, what kind of position would that be putting in, in a liability? I think what, what we're going to, the other thing is too, from what I saw, according to reading the bill, they could only be inspected once a year and it would be by appointment only, unlike the unannounced visits that you get at restaurants. There's no zoning restrictions. So once again, putting a commercial entity inside a residential zone seems counterintuitive to what we talked about when we did short-term rentals. Cities of Buellton, Solving, Santa Maria have all said that they're the ones that are going to have to deal with this and they don't want it. I actually could see, if it had been possible, to say that I could support it in the unincorporated area where there's more space between neighbors, there's more room for parking, um, you have maybe larger homes that you could do something like this at. I, I think that would be interesting. But in a residential neighborhood inside the city of Santa Maria, I don't know how many of you guys have driven down a residential neighborhood in Santa Maria recently. It is bumper-to-bumper cars down both sides. And if you wanted to have an event at your house where you were going to bring in 10 or 20 people, you couldn't do it. So, um, yeah, I just, I, I'm struggling outside of the fact that there are people doing it and we should, um, get in there and educate and regulate and do those types of things. If, if we're not going to provide the money for enforcement, um, I just think this is, this is a, a hope and a prayer. You, you might have some people in South County that, you know, upscale, that want to do this and, and make it a cool foodie experience. I get that. But that is not the reality of what's going to happen in Santa Maria. Like I said, we have hundreds of people already selling tamales and these types of products and, and pies and everything and they are not going to fall under a MECO's ordinance. So, um, we probably honestly should have enforcement dollars regardless if we pass this ordinance or not. You know, if we're, if we are the ones in charge of food safety and we know this activity is going on, uh, this is someplace for us to step up. And if we're really that concerned about food safety, you know, we need to make a priority at some point and give Lars and his team the ability to go out there and, and take care of the problems that, that apparently we think exist.
Thank you, Supervisor Lavino. Supervisor Hartman.
Uh, well, I agree with you on one point and not on another. So I'll start with the first one. We don't have short-term rentals in residential areas, but we do have home stays in residential areas. And the difference is that a homestay, someone actually, the, the principal resident is onsite and can oversee. So we've, we've already introduced a homestay and, and if you want to respond directly, go ahead.
Can I just real quick on that? That's another one that I find totally unenforceable. I mean, we, the only way you would know that is if you go and knock on the door and say, is Joan home the owner? And I don't know anybody that's doing that. So unless we had sheriff's deputies that were actually going out and determining that, that's why I find that, that hard to deal with.
So that, that brings me to the point I agree with you on. And that is, uh, as we, as the county gets, does more of these, compliance really needs to be a concern because we, we can't just let it to neighbors all the time. That's what we do and it's a passive and we all know about that. And eventually we've got to bite the bullet. Uh, this is difficult for me in, in one sense. Uh, this is the first thing I know as a supervisor coming where the, the county is making a decision that affects cities. And, and so we, we often promote local self-control, city self-determination, and, and that's, that's a difficult one. And I think it has to be balanced against promoting opportunity for people within cities. I, I was very affected by, uh, I was very affected by a city council member in Solvang, Claudia Aronja, who talked about the duties of cities to promote economic development and that this is really a vital cornerstone of city charter, what they're about. And she also went on to say, many entrepreneurs don't have access to capital to open a restaurant, and they appreciate that opportunity to have a startup. So that affected me. But if you start looking into it, like we heard today in some of the testimony, but also in the various radio and on the internet, stories about what this opportunity has meant. One that I heard on Good Food was a Korean woman who, she made baked items from home. And then people started asking her, what are your favorite Korean dishes, and would you cook that for me? And so she started to do that just as a favor. And eventually, they said, well, we'll help you invest in a restaurant. And so it was a very popular restaurant, and one of the patrons then brought a food critic. And at that point, it got a rave review and got a lot of attention. So that's kind of the story that I think we're hoping. There's no question, this affects a range of people, but for me, it's not the Santa Barbara foodies who are going to be doing really high-end things. For me, it's women who have to stay at home, and they don't have their caretakers of elderly parents or younger special-needs children. They have language barriers. They don't have access to the capital that it would take initially for a brick-and-mortar building. But they nonetheless have culinary talent, and they have entrepreneurial spirit. And I just, I can't ignore that. That is so important to me. We hear a lot about it's going to compete against restaurants. I happen to think it's going to compete even frozen dinners. And it's just easier to get better nutrition and really more variety and cultural experiences and give busy people a chance to eat a home-cooked meal. So I think the opportunity was the idea behind the AB 626. It was designed to create new avenues of income, and particularly, as the bill states, for Californians that need them the most, often women, immigrants, and people of color. So we talk a lot about equity, and here's an opportunity for us to really walk the talk.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman. Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I think Supervisor Hartman has it exactly right. I recognize and appreciate the concerns that our local government partners have about the burden being placed on them to be the frontline enforcement. You know, their court enforcement officers are going to get the first calls. But I do hope and expect that, as the folks from Environmental Health Services have told us, that they're going to have the resources to respond, to back up those complaints, and to do the work that they have promised that they're ready and able to do. Because their sense of this, looking at Riverside County and Imperial County, is that really, this is a very modest change. That there are lots of people who aspire to do things like this, but it's harder to actually execute it and make it work, too. So that there's, I think there's a natural limiting process involved. I don't think that reality causes an effective threat to any existing brick-and-mortar restaurants. I think Supervisor Hartman's right. It just provides a range of choices and a different spectrum for people to take opportunity to try something new and for people, you know, who would never have the chance to open a restaurant in the current climate with the costs involved in that, to get a toehold and to see if their concept works and could potentially attract investors that might make that happen. You know, I think that that's something that's probably overlooked by people in the restaurant industry, is that the pathway to opening restaurants is getting more and more difficult as time is going on and that looking outside of the box in the long term to think about, you know, what is that pipeline in the future that's going to create talented chefs that can feed that industry? I hear from restaurateurs that that's a problem right now, to reopening, is having, you know, the staff to do the work. This may be like the minor leagues of the future restaurant industry and an opportunity to test ideas and develop skills. You know, the FOGs issue is a real issue for local governments. But this is not a unique challenge to that. That problem exists today. Though there are issues, the people that don't understand the consequences of putting oil and grease down their drain, and that causes real live impacts to sewer wastewater treatment plants. But, you know, the answer to that is to educate people, and this is a path to doing that. This is bringing people who are interested, you know, in doing this into the permit process. Not everyone is going to take advantage of that. One of the speakers very eloquently talked about kind of dividing the world into thirds. There are people who are, you know, not doing this because they want to follow the rules and they are going to wait to get a permit. There are people who are doing this, you know, that will avail themselves of a permit, and then there's people who are never going to get a permit. And that just is how it is, and it exists. And I think personally that bringing some percentage of people in to the system and educating them and permitting them and allowing this opportunity is a benefit on the margins, on the edge. It's not going to solve giant problems, but it could begin to help individual people make a better economic opportunity for themselves. And I think, you know, when everybody really takes a calm look at that from that perspective, I would hope that the chambers recognize the value of economic opportunity at the micro level, too.
Thank you, Supervisor Hart. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I think this is a strange day, you know, when Republicans and chambers are arguing for more government interference and private enterprise, and liberal Democrats are arguing for more economic opportunities to start businesses. One of us is wrong. One of us is being inconsistent. Maybe all of us are being inconsistent. But I think the reason we're in this sort of divisive moment in this is actually just, as Mr. Hart indicated, because of a misimpression that this is a more revolutionary than it really is, right? I think this is an incremental change in public policy. It might be a big step in the sense that none of this stuff was legal. And, but I think it is a wise step. It is an increment, it is... I think people are massively overestimating its potential competitive edge to the restaurant industry. I mean, time will tell. I could be wrong. But I think that this is a slightly different niche. You know, when I buy tamales from somebody, it doesn't mean I go out to dinner last, right? You know, it's a different thing for me buying tamales from somebody on the street than taking my kids out to dinner, right? You know, it's just not comparable. And there may be some bleed, and someday, somebody will do an analysis on it. But I think the reason why we're in this moment of maybe a little divisiveness over this issue is because we are in an economically insecure moment, right? I think it has more to do with the moment that we're in than it does with this issue. And I'm only basing that on the fact that though this bill was debated, and there was plenty of different people on both sides of this, and its predecessor bill was debated, at the time, this was not a high-profile issue for the business community. I think right now, all of a sudden, it seems like it is. But I think it has more to do with the moment that we're in. And what that tells me is we've got a lot more to do to help our business climate in general and improve our economy and business opportunities in general. Because, you know, so I'm definitely going to take something away from this discussion. But to me, it's more about the larger mission that we need to do to make sure that economic opportunity is possible in Santa Barbara County.
Thank you, Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, it's different. We're taking different positions on this that may seem inconsistent with other positions. I'm actually going to take a land use perspective on this and a SECA perspective on this. So I guess there's the, we're all upside down. You know, because this discussion, we don't know who's right or wrong about the impact at this point. I don't think it's been proven out. I don't think this is actually broken up in thirds. I think it's probably 80% of people who aren't going to get the permit, 10 and 10 is probably more accurate. I think getting an inspection once a year gives people a false sense of security. A scheduled inspection here, again, I just, I don't know if we've gone too far with needing to regulate everything. You know, again, it bothers me that for a church to cook meals in their homes to feed the homeless people needs a permit. I just, that just blows my mind and think that we've gone too far at that point. I know that there's a need to protect the public, but, you know, mistakes can happen on cooking food in our own households, with our own families, for a barbecue. We can't prevent risk altogether. That's not going to happen, and an inspection once a year is not going to do that. What, you know, Jaime Flores's article, a letter about insurance being an issue, I can see that being an issue. If an insurance agent asks the right questions, they'll probably be concerned as well. But that's not ultimately where I landed on this. It's the idea that we have absolutely no control in our residential zoning for this, you know, that we can't restrict parking. There's a potential here of up to 30 meals in one day. And, you know, if somebody's doing this as a side hustle, it's probably going to be in a small window of time. That could potentially have some large traffic impacts in a neighborhood. You know, we're already under attack in our neighborhoods, our single-family zoning with ADUs, engineered ADUs, short-term rentals. There's all these different things that are being allowed. And, you know, I think this is actually a transformation potentially in residential zoning that I think is inconsistent. I think if we could have opted in with a restriction, I would be way closer to accepting this. I mean, one of the things that we have to do in voting for this, part of this motion, is we have to make a SECA exemption here, that there is no possibility that this activity may have a significant impact on the environment. Okay, I don't, I mean, we've denied projects over less impacts than this, in my opinion. And so I can't make that finding, and so ultimately, I'm not going to be able to support a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Could we ask Mr. Gazoni to comment on that, or may I ask him?
Please.
Chair and Supervisors, we reviewed the SECA exemption on this. I think that actually is defensible. If challenged, we also would be able to assert not just the 15061B3 that's listed in the notice of exemption, but anything applicable, including existing facilities or small alterations. So I think that if challenged in litigation, we'd be likely to prevail. The board does have, though, at the top of the program, I had said, great discretion on go, no-go on this.
Supervisor Lavigno?
Yeah, I would just encourage, it sounds like this is going to be a split vote, 3 to 2. And, you know, I think from what we heard from our cities was what we say all the time when this state rains down on us. You know, it's like, hey, why don't you throw a little money our way to help us with this? So, you know, if we're serious about this, we got to fund this at a level where Lars has somebody or something to make this thing work. Otherwise, this is just us saying, go for it, and, you know, it all falls on them. So I'm not voting for it anyway because I don't think it's enforceable, no matter. We'd have to have an enforcement team twice the size of our cannabis team to actually do this effectively. But I just think we have to go in eyes wide open that, you know, it's going to kind of be a little bit Wild Wild West out there for a while.
Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I think Supervisor Lavigno raises a good point. I don't know what the answer to it is, but I think it's something we should at least consider in the budget discussion because, you know, I'm hearing from specifically the city of Santa Maria that has experience with this that they're telling us that they have ongoing complaints that they, I assume, have forwarded to Environmental Health, and they say has not, you know, they haven't been responsive. Mr. Seifert says, you know, there's been a handful of complaints in the whole county. There's a big disconnect on the facts there. And, you know, this outreach effort, this most recent round of outreach effort was an attempt to kind of bridge those things, and obviously, we haven't fully gotten there yet. But, you know, I think it's incumbent on everybody to be more responsive to that. If that's happening, we need the city of Santa Maria to document that and make that transparent to EHS and make that transparent to us so we can do something about it. And, you know, what I heard from Mr. Seifert is that they're staffed and ready to do this based on the experience they've had. So somewhere in there is a disconnect. And we do have time between now and the budget to get into that a little bit more. And maybe the CEO's office can look into that, too, and work with the city in Santa Maria and say, you know, where's the documentation of the complaints that you made? And, you know, where's the follow-up on our end or not-follow-up so we can have a better sense of what's actually going on?
Supervisor Lavigno, and then I think CEO Misato has.
You know, and maybe that's something for Lars to come back to us because I think some of the complaints that they're getting that they're not following up on, quote-unquote, I think some of those, too, are food truck operations and elotima and the vendor that's walking the street. But I don't think those are in this same classification, and I don't think those are controlled the same way. I don't know what all those rules are and regulations are, and it would probably be a good idea for us as part of that to kind of get a little bit of a primer on that.
CEO, and then Supervisor Hartman.
Chair Nelson, Supervisor, I was just going to say what Supervisor Lavigno said, which was maybe Mr. Seifert can come back to the board, and we can also have a discussion with the cities to make sure we're talking about the same thing. I think that's the issue. If the board wants to go forward with this, and what I would suggest, it is Public Health, obviously, to track what they were doing. We would hear complaints from the cities, and we would come back either at half a year after it's been implemented and give a report to the board. And I think we would work with Public Health to say, you know, what is it going to take? If you get a lot of complaints or you have to do a lot more enforcement, we can ask them to go forward with that and come back at the year, at the end of the year, to see where we are and make a budget adjustment then. But I think we want to be responsive to the cities. I'm meeting with all the city managers tomorrow morning at our quarterly meeting, so I'm sure I'm going to be hearing about this.
Do you want to vote on this?
So obviously, we want to be responsive, and we can work just more closely with Public Health and have them come back and make reports to the board. And Mr. Seifert, did you want to say something to that effect?
Yeah, thank you, CEO. The Environmental Health would be more than happy to pull that information together and return to the board with analysis of that, you know, once implemented and whether there is impact and additional needs for enforcement. To Supervisor Lavigno's comments to the chair, we do receive complaint referrals related to mobile food trucks, street vendors. There's other aspects of this that are not associated with MECO-type operations that we have received some complaints on. We are in discussions currently with the city of Santa Maria and trying to work with them on educational opportunities associated with street vending as well. So we do and would be interested in assessing the enforcement tools that we have, the various potential complaints that cities are getting, and returning to the board with a report on what additional tools may be useful in the future.
Thank you. Supervisor Hartman?
And I, too, was going to suggest a report maybe a year after it's gone effective, but not just on the compliance and enforcement piece of it, but just overall, where and what is being permitted, and any other insights? Is this, you know, who's taking advantage of this?
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman. I guess that is another question. When we opt in, is there the option to opt out after we opt in?
Mr. Gazoni?
Chair and Supervisors, although it's not express in Section 114367, I believe the county would have the opportunity to opt out. I would just caution that if you were looking at that, as we've done in some other areas, once somebody has, and this would not be vesting in that it's coming through the Public Health Department, but there is an occupation in there, and they probably want to provide an amortization period. So I think just flicking the switch off would be riskier than having some kind of build-down or amortization period if you went a different direction later.
Understood, but it might be nice to have that in the toolbox moving forward. I'll undertake a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendations.
I'll move the staff recommendations, A through F.
Second?
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Supervisor Hart?
Aye.
Supervisor Hartman?
Aye.
Supervisor Levonino?
No.
Supervisor Williams?
Aye.
And Chair Nelson?
No.
Motion passes 3 to 2.
All right. I think a healthy discussion. Head on to our third and final item of today. Departmental item number three, Madam Clerk, will you please read that item in the record?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, departmental item number three is from Planning and Development. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the allocation of the 2020 and the 2021 Coastal Resource Enhancement Fund CREF grants.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I wanted to let you know that we have John Zorovich, who's the deputy director, Erin Briggs, supervising planner, and Kathy Pfeifer, who is the planner that reviews the CREF applications every year. And Kathy is, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Pfeifer is here to present the recommendations from planning and development. In addition, we have a number of presentations from the applicants for the CREF funding. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Pfeifer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Nelson and members of the board. I'd like to take a few minutes and go over staff's presentation. If we could maybe have the PowerPoint on there, please? Great. Cool move, yeah, perfect. All right. So, this slide here summarizes staff's recommendations. I'll be going with the recommendations A and F, staff's recommendations for the 2020 and 2021 awards, and the amount recommended for the fund deferral program. The other recommendations are administrative in nature, and we can discuss those if you have any questions. Next slide, please. So, for those of you who might be new to CREF, this slide gives a brief overview. Three oil and gas projects pay annually into CREF as mitigation for coastal impacts. The CREF guidelines stipulate that half of the annual fees go towards coastal acquisition-type projects, excuse me, and the other half can go towards general allocation-type projects like capital improvements and educational projects. Staff solicitor proposals evaluates with the board-approved CREF criteria and recommends proposals for CREF awards. The board is the decision-maker on all CREF awards. Next slide, please. For the combined CREF cycle, the county received 10 proposals. One of the proposals is for acquisition and is requesting the amount available, and the remaining nine proposals are considered general allocation, seeking more than what is available by approximately $450,000. Attachment A of your board letter includes a detailed evaluation of each of the 10 proposals. Staff recommends funding nine of the 10 CREF proposals in this cycle. Next slide, please. We'll go over the coastal acquisition portion first. The available coastal acquisition monies in this two-year cycle is $712,800. This amount includes $146,000 and $606 from both the 2020 and 21 CREF fees. In addition, the current balance of the fund deferral program is $419,588. Next slide, please. The Land Trust for Santa Barbara County is requesting the full amount of acquisition funds available towards purchasing a conservation easement along 277 acres of the Gabiota Coast. The conservation easement would limit and consolidate development on-site, protecting 55 acres of coastal scrub and riparian habitats, and preserving the open space and visual resources along Highway 101. Staff recommends a partial award of $175,000. This would come from the full amount available in the 2020 coastal acquisition monies and $28,394 of the 2021 coastal acquisition monies. This partial award amount is in line with other CREF grants, awards. CREF has contributed to two other conservation easements along the Gabiota Coast, and one is adjacent to the Arilla Ranch property, and the other is nearby. All right, next slide, please. If the board grants $175,000 CREF award to proposal number nine, there'd be $118,212 remaining in the 2021 coastal acquisition sub-fund. Staff recommends that that amount be deferred to the fund deferral program, along with retaining the fund's current balance. Therefore, a total of approximately $538,000 would be in the fund deferral program and earmarked for coastal acquisition projects in the future. Next slide, please. The next three slides, we're going to go over staff's recommendations for the general allocation proposals. Staff is recommending full request grants to the three proposals on this slide. A grant for proposal number one would help Nature Track purchase beach-friendly wheelchair track devices. These devices would be used during the applicant's outdoor student field trips to coastal locations throughout the county. A grant for proposal number three would help the Channel Islands Marine and Wildlife Institute complete their marine curriculum program. The educational program consists of lesson, online lesson plans, supportive learning activities, and engaging videos to all schools in Santa Barbara County and beyond via their website. And a grant for proposal number 10 would help the Santa Maria Natural History Museum upgrade a few of their coastal exhibits, many of which were funded by past CREF grants. Next slide, please. The remaining general allocation proposals are all recommendations for partial funding grants. And the reason for partial funding is, grants are mostly due to the fact that a full request award would not allow other good projects to be funded in this cycle. A grant for proposal number two would help the Santa Barbara Wildlife Care Network purchase conditioning pools, enclosures, and heat and dryers for oiled-covered birds. A grant for proposal number four would go towards Channel Keepers' one-year pilot program to specifically reduce trash pollution entering south coast watersheds from abandoned homeless encampments. And a grant for proposal number five would help the county's Community Services Department reduce erosion along Lookout Park's bluff top by relocating and upgrading the irrigation system and installing erosion controls. Next slide, please. A partial award to proposal number seven would help fund the city of Santa Barbara's restoration project on the Arroyo Borough Open Space Park. Improvements outlined in this proposal include trails and a bridge over the creek connecting the bike lane currently being built on Las Pecitas Park, Las Pecitas Road. A grant for proposal number eight would help the Lompoc Unified School District with a new coastal splash zone exhibit at the Cabrillo High School Aquarium. There's one proposal, proposal number six, the Sea Cave Project, staff is not recommending for an award. It's a pretty exciting project, however, we believe it's premature at this time for a CREF grant, as the applicant needs to obtain permits from the Coastal Commission and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And applications for those permits have not been submitted yet. However, if the board does allocate a CREF grant to this proposal, staff recommends three contingencies on page 25 of the staff report to be placed on the project. All right, and then this concludes staff's presentation, and we're here for any questions you might have. Following any questions that you might have, the more creative side of this is with the applicant's presentations, and proposal presentations will be done in proposal order. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeifer. Any questions from the board before we go to presentations? Supervisor Williams?
Well, on the Galida kelp replenishment project, you know, I just wanted to understand what's the relationship to the project that has already put kelp retention devices? I would suspect that the current one is on a research permit, and perhaps this is a scalable and would need a different permit, but I've kind of followed this in my capacity at Beacon for 15 years, and it's always kind of a merry-go-round, right? That like, one agency says, well, we're not going to fund it until the permits happen, but permits take money to get to. So, I just wanted to kind of evaluate that.
I personally don't know the answer to that, and that might be something Chris could handle answering during his presentation.
So, that would be helpful just to know. I mean, there's at least a couple dozen, a few dozen of those devices that are working currently. They've taken me out on a site visit, and I dove them to see them working, and they're working great. So, I just wanted to understand, is this the same entity or a different entity that has done the research, kelp replenishment devices out there in the past?
Does staff have an answer to that question, or we can defer that to the presentation on that?
I think I'm going to be deferring that to Chris. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I have a question. So, the 50% towards, just help me with this, this is my first CREF hearing, 50% towards acquisition and 50% towards programs, is that the allocation? Is that a recommendation, or is that hard and fast rule? You know, I looked at some of the previous awards, and sometimes we've strayed from that. What's the policy decision and boundaries that we're operating under?
So, that is written up in the CREF guidelines, that 50% goes towards coastal acquisition. We definitely have deviated, the board has definitely directed staff to deviate from that at times per different cycles. So, that's definitely something that the board has done and can do in the future.
All right. I guess I'd ask counsel whether, is there wide latitude here? What's the, where do we sit?
Chair, I'll pull a little bit more on this, but the board has pretty broad discretion in this, and probably the nexus that you want to have is recognizing what's the source of funds, and how is this addressing a coastal impact? But there's a pretty broad discretion within that world.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, just to addendum to that question, it's not really 50/50, because 50% of the non-open space acquisition we're detaining for the hope, some would think eventuality of a Hollister Trail. So, it's more like 25, 25, 50, and I'm, you know, wonder, you know, I mean, is that sacred? Is, you know, is there some years we can do 20, 30, 50, or, you know, or are we going to be struck by lightning? Can you just give me a sense of that as staff?
I don't think you'll be struck by lightning. What we did is we took the Hollister Ranch Access Program money off at the top, and then we did the 50/50 from there. So, that's kind of how we've done it, once we decided to start pulling off Hollister Ranch money. But my understanding, and again, these are CREF guidelines, they're your prerogatives, I think last cycle, I think about a little bit less than $15,000 was shaved off acquisition money and given to Cabrillo High School Aquarium to make a full $100,000. So, you know, I think the board has a lot allowed to, like County Council said.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pfeifer.
And is the reason for the Hollister large share just that because there were some years that we weren't putting anything towards?
So, Hollister Ranch, right, so we.
Or, I should say, the reason being that on some years, our predecessors weren't putting anything.
Yeah, we discovered that we should probably start putting money into there, and so we thought that that, about 100, I think it's like 156,000 we're pulling off each year. We feel like that that was kind of a doable amount that could also have a cycle being run. And so, I believe that we have about $750,000 in there, and we're trying to get to $1 million. So, it'll probably be another couple of CREF cycles that we'll be pulling that amount of money off.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pfeifer. Let's go ahead and begin our presentations. I believe the first one up is proposal number one with Sue, you said Gary?
Yes, yes.
Apologize, I'm sure I said that wrong.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was eager. And I'm waiting for my PowerPoint to come up. There we go. Chair Nelson and supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to present Nutracks. Since 2011, Nature Track has provided outdoor field trips for thousands of Santa Barbara County students. Using a Freedom Track, our program will now include students, teachers, volunteers, and others of all ages who are wheelchair users or are mobility impaired. Freedom Tracks quickly transforms a manual wheelchair into a battery-powered, all-terrain vehicle that can easily traverse beach, sand, and trails. Take a look at Freedom Tracks in action. Next slide, please. And please start the video. Next slide, please. There, you just saw Steve Schultz in the video, and he's been a volunteer with us since 2011. His participation has been limited to only a few of the field trip locations, and none of those were beaches. He can now fully participate in all of our field trips. Next slide, please. Nutracks program will allow mobility-impaired students, teachers, volunteers, and even parents to participate in Nature Track's outdoor field trip program. It will also allow wheelchair users the opportunity to volunteer for activities such as beach cleanups, the Snowy Clover docent program, and many other outdoor programs offered throughout Santa Barbara County. Next slide, please. On an annual basis, we'll provide outdoor experiences for 300 or more students and adults who are wheelchair users and others who are mobility impaired. We will do this through our outdoor field trip program and also by lending the Freedom Tracks units to other organizations in Santa Barbara County that offer outdoor programs. Nutracks will now provide access to our local trails and beaches for wheelchair users whose experiences in nature have been limited or nonexistent. We've already raised funding for three Freedom Track units, so this request represents matching funds for three additional Freedom Track units. Next slide, please. Nature Track is providing a new level of accessibility and inclusivity for wheelchair users and others who are mobility impaired in Santa Barbara County. Now, everyone can independently enjoy our beautiful beaches and trails. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. No questions?
I don't think we have any questions at this time, and I think it'd be great for the panelists to hang on, maybe towards the end, after we've heard from all the presentations. I think that's probably the best way to go about this.
Okay, well, thanks again.
Great. Thank you, Sue. Proposal number two, Ariana Katovich?
Hello, everyone. Greetings from Santa Barbara Wildlife Care Network. It's nice to see you all. I'm the executive director here at Wildlife Care Network. We take care of 4,700 animals a year. That's what we did in 2020, our busiest year even in a global pandemic. And we mitigate coastal impacts 365 days a year from animals that have been affected by natural oil seeps, have ingested fishing gear, tangled in fishing line, swallowed rodenticide, attacked by dogs, potentially starving because of ocean conditions, disoriented, and being orphaned. Those are just some of the impacts that we see on our coastal population, bird populations. You can go to the next slide, please. We also see a significant amount of shorebirds and waterfowl. These are mallards. We had 280 of them in 2020. Part of our proposal is to create shorebird and mallard enclosures at our center that would reduce stress on these animals that are actually highly stressed when they're in care and would be a game changer in our ability to care for these birds year after year, not just mallards, but any standing waterfowl that need access, gentle sloped access to water. Next slide, please. These are just some of our patients. This is a surf scouter. This is a baby California lease tern. Its nest was destroyed. So whenever these animals find themselves in need, we get a call on our helpline and our staff is here. We have a team of transporters that bring them to our center 365 days a year. Next slide, please. We also have a lot of oiled birds. It's not just a myth. We do indeed use Dawn to break down oil. We have one sink here at the center to wash oiled birds. We are in the middle of a capital campaign right now to build a wildlife hospital. It's under construction right now as we speak, which will include four more additional wash sinks that were also provided with CREF funds for those sinks. And we've received 126 oiled birds so far in 2021. These are from natural oil seeps, so when birds get oil on their feathers, they lose their waterproofing and can suffer from hypothermia. So they need to be addressed right away. In the background there is our veterinarian, Dr. Avery Berkowitz, washing a oiled cormorant. Next slide, please. This is what we do now with oiled birds to continue the rehabilitation. We drive them from Santa Barbara Wildlife Care Network all the way to International Bird Rescue in Long Beach. This is a, I would say, in the best of conditions, a five and a half hour round trip. It happens 52 weeks a year, if we're lucky, once a week all year long. And we can go to the next slide. Because International Bird Rescue has these, these are pelagic pools, highly filtered, above-ground pools that are for preconditioning release. So after a bird is oiled, then washed and dried, goes through a very extensive process of being swum on these clean waters, then dried, and they swim again, and then they get dried again in the process of rewaterproofing. And so SBWCN has purchased a kind of a temporary pool so that we can reduce our need to go down to IBR. Part of that is because we have a veterinarian on site and we can take care of these birds. And also in pandemic times, we've also had to do more and be more self-sufficient. And it is part of our capital campaign to be able to take care of these birds more here in Santa Barbara as opposed to relying on a volunteer network of transporters to drive them down to Long Beach every week. We call it the Tuesday Bird Run. Next slide, please. This is just a rendering of our hospital. I'm tempted to jump out and show you what the hospital looks like right now, but it is framed and it will include significant oiled bird washing capacity, including a large room for animals that are being affected by a large oil spill. Need to be crated inside as well as a washroom and a dry room specifically dedicated to oiled birds. So Wildlife Care Network is here providing service every day and it's, I encourage any of you to come out and visit us. I'd love to see you all out here, maybe volunteering and spraying down crates and you can see what we do for yourselves for our coastal animals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Katovich. I just want to remind each of the presenters, we all appreciate the great information you're providing us, but to be fair, let's try to keep our time to the instructed three minutes.
I just, I'm sorry, we can't see the timer, so that might be.
All right. I'll catch you then. I'll give you guys a warning. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Proposal number three is going to be presented by Ruth Dover.
All right, I think I'm unmuted. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ruth Dover and I am one of the founders and the director of Channel Islands Marine and Wildlife Institute, which is also known as SIMWE, our acronym. Our 2020-2021 CREF grant proposal is for funding to create and to provide marine conservation education that captivates, inspires, and empowers. If we can go to the next slide. For those of you that don't know much about our organization, we prepared a short video for you about the work that we do and how we serve the community of Santa Barbara. If you can play the video. Channel Islands Marine and Wildlife Institute, also known as SIMWE, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to positively impacting conservation through marine mammal rescue, rehabilitation, research, and education to promote ocean and human health. SIMWE serves Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties as a part of the Marine Mammal Health and Stranding Response Program under NOAA's National Marine Fisheries Service. SIMWE is also an active member of the Oiled Wildlife Care Network and the Marine Mammal Disentanglement Team. Our core work is the rescue and rehabilitation of sick, injured, malnourished, orphaned, entangled, and oiled marine mammals. We respond to reports of seals, sea lions, sea turtles, dolphins, porpoises, and whales. SIMWE provides education and outreach programs in both communities and our research is focused on marine mammal health and human impact on the environment. We rely on dedicated and passionate volunteers, community awareness, and external financial support to sustain our day-to-day operations and enhance our mission. For more information about SIMWE and how you can support our work, please visit our website at simwe.org. You could be the difference in giving a marine mammal a second chance at life in the wild. And if we can go to the next slide. SIMWE is passionate about educating children. Our CREF proposal is centered around educating children about local marine ecosystems through fun, engaging, and thought-provoking lesson plans, which also include multimedia and hands-on activities. Our project goal is to create engaging and self-directed education content that inspires conservation and ocean stewardship, as well as empowers youth to be the catalyst for change to protect our planet. Next slide. Our project components are noted on this slide, which is video development and that's creating the scripts to introduce each of our 10 lesson plans, video production, which is the production of these 10 lessons, these, excuse me, videos. And then the platforms are to enhance our website and YouTube channels to accommodate all of this new content. And then the last one is number 32, which is to purchase copies of our children's book that has been in publication and thanks to a previous CREF grant, we did our first print run. And that's to give three copies of this book to each of the elementary schools in Santa Barbara County. Next slide. This slide shows our project schedule with a go-live date in month nine. And the next slide. We hope you will support SIMWE's CREF proposal so that we can make a bigger difference in our Santa Barbara community and in the world. Appreciate your time and if there's any questions, we can entertain those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Proposal number four is going to be presented by Molly Troop.
Good afternoon, Chair Nelson and supervisors. My name is Molly Troop and I am the Science and Policy Associate at Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. We're a local environmental nonprofit with the mission to protect and restore the Santa Barbara Channel and its watersheds. We achieve this mission through science-based advocacy, fieldwork, education, and enforcement. Next slide, please. Last year, as we navigated the challenges that came with COVID, we were forced to pause many of our volunteer and outreach programs due to health and safety concerns with gathering people. With extensive closures, people numbers not seen before, we're seeking solace on trails and local swimming holes and flocking to the only place that was open, nature. With this increased visitation, we are also seeing an uptick in trash being left behind. This trash issue is discussed in online forums and written about extensively. Although trash and cleanups are not new issues and responses, the volume of trash was an acute situation that needed a quick response that abided by health and safety rules. So over Memorial Day weekend almost a year ago, we bought supplies, provided some quick guidance, and called upon the community to join us for dispersed cleanups around the Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties over the holiday weekend. And so we launched our first Watershed Brigade event. This dispersed and separate event was a great success and we were able to quickly activate dozens of our community members and help remove much trash and act as ambassadors out on our trails and swimming holes. Since our initial launch last year, we have continued to develop this program into a full-fledged program. And our Watershed Brigade is a community of volunteers who are dedicated in keeping local watersheds and beaches clean. Folks have fun while having a huge impact. Next slide, please. We've created and incentivized participation in the Watershed Brigade by gamifying cleanups and creating a point system, awarding participants entries into monthly drawings for fun prizes, including gift certificates to local businesses like ocean-friendly restaurants and bike shops. We have monthly challenges to encourage participation. For example, in April, we hosted a cleanup event that focused on trails and turnouts throughout Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties. We've created a corporate challenge which companies can join for volunteer and team-building events while gaining visibility. And we've had five companies join us so far and are still welcoming others. Next slide, please. Over the last year, we've had incredible participation in this program and we've been able to still engage over 300 volunteers during a pandemic safely and independently. And those people have cleaned up 140 locations throughout our watersheds and removed at least over 6,000 pounds of trash. Next slide, please. The community that we've been able to create through this program is one of the main benefits. Although conducted independently, when conducting a cleanup as part of the Watershed Brigade, you're part of a community working together to make a larger impact than you could on your own. In addition to the $5,000 that staff is recommending today, we have secured $50,000, which has helped support the build-out of this program. The CREF funds would be used to support cleanup, excuse me, for additional cleanup supplies such as trash roller bins and contractors to help clean up trash hotspots in coordination with city and county officials. Thank you for the opportunity to share this exciting development of the Watershed Brigade program and thank you for the additional funding and support of this program.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And next proposal, proposal number five will be presented by Jill Van Wee.
Good afternoon, supervisors. And as always, there are many quality coastal projects in front of you, so we greatly appreciate your consideration of any funding for the Lookout Park Bluff Erosion Mitigation Project. Next slide, please. I think the important thing to take, the one important thing to take away from this presentation is that the bluff erosion occurring at this park is primarily occurring at the top of the bluff due to irrigation surface runoff. And it's just quite different than the bluff-based coastal erosion that we're used to seeing these days. So what we're doing through this project is relocating the irrigation about 10 to 20 feet from the bluff edge and upgrading the irrigation system to be a low-flow system and then installing some jute baffles and coastal plantings on the bluff. Next slide. Here's just a photographic example of where we're going to pull the irrigation to in that park in the mideastern section of the park. Next slide. And here's a photo of where we would be installing jute baffles and some natural plantings on the bluff. Next slide, please. And the estimated project costs are about $320,000. And any CREF allocation would be accepted in order to offset any kind of CSD Parks Maintenance Funds, which are funded by County General Funds. And with next slide, please, last slide. And this just shows the nexus of the oil funds relation to this coastal park. This is what used to be on the coast right in front of the park. And with that, just appreciate your consideration and wish you all the best. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jill. Next one will be proposal number six by Chris Goldblatt. Chris, you're still muted.
Got it. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Got it. Okay. Hello, supervisors. Thanks for hearing me today. So I'll go ahead and do my prepared speech and then answer any questions after that. The U.S. Geological Survey Kelp Maps outlined in fine detail, along with a lot of aerial photos that are at the UCSB Library, proved that we had a kelp bed that was 1,000 feet wide that went from El Capitan all the way to Rincon. And it was there probably for thousands of years since the last Ice Age. Many of you probably remember it. And then it was wiped away in the 1983 Great Alenia, which was in order of magnitude bigger than the Alenias that we've just experienced. And the reason it wiped it away is because there was a whole, there was like a river of rocks on the seabed out there that were washed out into deep water. And those rocks are, they come from terrestrial sources. They come off the hillsides during 200-year events like we had during the 2017 mudslides. Those rocks that unfortunately damaged everybody's property and there was some loss of life, their ultimate destiny is the seabed in that area. And it's those rocks that provide what you call the substrate for the kelps, the kelp, the giant kelp to form holdfast and then make the kelp forests that provide coastal erosion control because when you have a kelp bed, the longshore current deflects off of it. It sequesters a lot of carbon. It's really the heart of our marine ecosystem. It's kind of our local sequoia trees that are just gone. And they're gone because of human interference with the destiny of those rocks. As we've seen, the county did a great job at rounding those rocks up and taking them away at the depot that we see up there off of Potsford Road. But they deprived the marine ecosystem of the recharging of the basis for the future kelp bed. So it's really a man-made problem, in part unknowingly by the county and the fence that was placed in the foothills, it really didn't help matters either because it stops the rocks from going in. Ultimately, in the future, you may see a decline in surf breaks as well because of that man-made activity. So the rocks that normally go out to sea, they're stopped by houses and hedges and roads and then well-intending counties essentially taking them away. So we designed the sea cape, which you see in front of you. It took about 11 years of working on this. It's a patent-pending design and it's designed specifically to hold large amounts of marine life inside of it for abalone restoration and things like that. And then it has a large flat surface on the top to hold the very large bases to the kelp. So when you get a 20-year storm event, they have a much larger chance of not being torn off and torn up and washed up on the beach. So using this system, the plan is to create, starting in Galita Bay, 200-acre kelp forests, lots of them, all the way down to Rincon over the next 20 or 30 years. And we aim to start with a two-acre pilot study reef made with 244 of these. There's nothing here for scale. I can pull up another picture. They're quite large. They weigh 2,700 pounds. They're made out of chemically engineered concrete where the pH matches the seawater so the kelp spores can settle on it. And they're just extremely stable in high-weather conditions. So. So we ask, you know, we thank the staff for reviewing our proposal. We recognize that they didn't affirm our proposal, but we do ask that the supervisors direct $200,000 so we can finish the permitting, the tooling, the construction, the deployment, and the monitoring. A project of this size, even the two acres-
Mr. Goldblatt, if you could wrap up.
Okay. Former Supervisor Stoker, and he was also the head of the EPA Division IX, wanted me to say, or he mentioned to me that this is a golden opportunity to use CREF funds for a marine project and to his knowledge, that hadn't been done specifically in the past. So we thank you for your consideration and we hope that you choose to value the restoration of our kelp forest because we can and will do that for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Just the same question I had before. What's your relationship with the folks who have already placed by a little bit different of a design, kelp replenishment devices on the seafloor over there?
Other than an academic relationship of information sharing, there is not a direct relationship. I do know that that project was funded by Beacon. As you can see, it's very permissible. It was permitted. So were the other two very large reefs recently deployed off of San Onofre of over 300 acres and off of Palos Verdes of 60 acres. And we use the exact same permit experts, the same people to study it, go through the same process. We have state lands that's willing to be our lead agency. Army Corps has no opposition. DFW seems to like the idea. And in my conversations with staff, Coastal Commission is also very supportive. So there really isn't a problem when it comes to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Proposal number seven, we have Erin Markey.
Hello, Chair Nelson and county supervisors. Thanks for having me today and for your consideration of our project. I'm Erin Markey with the City of Santa Barbara, here to present to you on the Arroyo Borough Open Space Restoration and Trail Improvement Project. Next slide, please. This is a 21-acre open space in the lower portion of the Arroyo Borough watershed. A portion of this property was actually purchased by the city in 2016 with some funding from CREF. The city completed a large restoration project out here in 2018 that focused really on the habitat along Arroyo Borough Creek and trying to restore floodplain and native riparian habitat there. And we're now looking at a second phase of work in the more northern portion and upland areas of the site. Next slide, please. So this is just a site overview plan sheet of our proposed project. So we're looking at restoring what we call the Campanal Tributary Drainage. That's the square in the upper-left of your screen, which is an existing tributary to Arroyo Borough Creek that we are going to be doing some grading, non-native removal, and then revegetation with native plants. We're also formalizing trail routes out here.
Hold on, Erin. We just lost your connection with you. Could you try and finagle where your microphone's connected to your computer? That doesn't seem to be fixing.
You hear me now?
We can.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So I don't know where you lost me, but this is kind of a site overview. We're going to be doing some restoration to a tributary drainage. We're going to be rerouting some trails to kind of formalize the trail routes that are out there on site. We're looking at installing a pedestrian bridge over Arroyo Borough Creek to connect to the Las Vasidas multi-use pathway, which the city is currently constructing along the shoulder of Las Vasidas Road. This will create a northern entrance to the park, allowing bike and pedestrian users from that pathway access to the park at another location, but also a connection to Ealing's Park, which is just across Las Vasidas Road. We'll also be relocating an existing water main that crosses the creek here to the underside of the bridge. This will actually raise the water line up about four feet in elevation to protect it from future flooding. And it'll allow us to restore another 100 feet of Arroyo Borough Creek as there's some bank hardening adjacent to that existing water line that we'll be able to remove. So we're looking at planting about 2,600 native plants out on site, including 350 trees. Next slide. I just have a few photos. So this is an example of the existing trail routes out there that we're looking to improve upon, as well as this is a view of that tributary drainage area, which is currently dominated by non-native vegetation, as you can see. Next slide. And then this is the proposed roughly bridge location will be just downstream of this water line. You can see some of the concrete debris and pipe and wire revement that we'll be removing. And then next slide, this is some of the restoration downstream that we have already completed, just an example of what the site will look like down the road. And that's it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Erin.
Great. Next, we have proposal number eight, and that's going to be live from Christopher Ladwig and a few students from Carrillo High School.
Thank you, Chair Nelson and members of the board. My name is Jenny Dean and I'm a head curator at Carrillo High School.
I'm Hayden Henry, also a head curator here at Carrillo.
Thank you very much for having us and getting some money and sharing special program and CREF proposals with you guys.
You guys can hold on one second. Hold on. We're trying to get the sound figured out. One moment, we'll get you started here in a minute. All right, let's go ahead and start over.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Nelson and members of the board. My name is Jenny Dean and I'm a head curator at Carrillo High School.
I'm Hayden Henry, also a head curator here at Carrillo.
Thank you for having us and letting us share a special program and CREF proposal with you guys today. This year, Carrillo High School is celebrating its 35th anniversary, as well as its 20th year in our current building. In a year like no other, our amazing students and teachers have kept the program thriving by offering over 150 virtual tours for classes near our town and other groups from across Santa Barbara County and even far away to Oklahoma, completely free of charges. We're also thrilled to announce that next month, we'll start welcoming electric school classes back into our facility for in-person tours. Over the last five years, we've been undergoing efforts to replace and upgrade our original tanks, which have begun to degrade. One area of our local coast that we've never been able to exhibit is the coastal surf zone. It's so critical to the health of our coastline as it provides water to our toilets and also mitigates water pollution like oil spills. Plus, to be honest, wet tanks are a huge bad thing.
Thankfully, we've cracked the code on how to display this coastal surf zone. After consulting design professionals, we created this high-tech, innovative coastal splashing zone. Now, if you look behind it, you can see these. These are our kelp-revved business tanks. They're 20 years old and glass. They're the only tanks in this square that we haven't upgraded or replaced in the entire history of this building. So because they have a perfect footprint for this new tank, we've created this. It's going to have a nine-foot-tall rock tower, which is going to send a wave down this tank, stimulating the surf zone. It's going to provide us a unique opportunity to show an environment that's otherwise way too dangerous and unpredictable to show in person. Also, because some people have their first experience with the ocean here, it's going to provide a unique experience to them as well. So the total budget for this project is $125,000, not including in-flight costs. This is largely due to the over-engineering required for such a complex exhibit. Because of the tremendous force that this acrylic will be subjected to, we need to make sure for our safety and the critter's safety, it can withstand that and more. To finance this, we applied to $110,000 from CREF and recommended for $50,000. This is a major step forward, but it does mean we will have to spend more time and resources to look for additional funding.
The CREF have been a valuable educational resource for Santa Barbara County since 1986, and this unique addition will make our educational effort even more effective. The project will add the most dynamic and engaging exhibits we've ever had, simulating the incredible part of our local coast that we've never successfully demonstrated for thousands of visitors. Before we leave, we'd like to especially thank Kathy Pfeifer in the Planning and Development Department for all of their support and hard work with the CREF program. Thank you again for your time, and we're here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be probably back to you a little bit later.
Great job. Thank you both. Proposal number nine, Devin Rothman.
Thank you, Chair Nelson and supervisors. I'll also say, so I'm Devin Rothman, Land Trust for Santa Barbara County, and we also have our Executive Director, Meredith Hendricks, here to help answer questions as they may come up. Talking to you about the Aurela Ranch Conservation Easement Project, which is the only acquisition project in the CREF grant cycle this year. Next slide, please. Aurela Ranch is located on the Gaviota Coast, about halfway between Galita and the Gaviota State Park. You can see from this map that it's located near some other important protected lands, including a couple of ranches that have been protected under Conservation Easements with CREF funding, and also is very close to both Ruffujo and El Capitan State Beach. Next slide, please. Aurela Ranch is 277 acres of open space, including 55 acres of native habitat and over 200 acres of historical agricultural lands. We've probably all seen it before, even if we don't know. It's part of the sunny Gaviota Coast view shed on your left as you're driving south, right past Ruffujo Beach. It covers a huge portion of that view shed there down Gaviota. It also contains an important stretch of Benedicto Creek and provides important wildlife movement from the surrounding protected lands through this creek corridor and into the beaches there. Next slide, please. Outcome of a conservation easement on this ranch to limit the size, height, location of any future development to areas that don't impact the scenery or the native habitats, permanently protect that native riparian and coastal habitat. And it would serve scenic views from the state beaches as well as the coastal trail that runs along the bluffs between Ruffujo and El Capitan State Beach. This property provides a lot of that scenic background. And finally, it would allow for this continued agriculture use that's consistent with the long history of the Gaviota ranches. Next slide, please. Some of the benefits of conservation easement versus buying a property in fee. The biggest one is the biggest bane for your buck. The appraised value of conservation easement is less than a third of the cost of buying properties in fee. As we all know, with rising land prices, those values are going to get higher and higher. But the biggest thing is that the landowners for this property are willing to sell an easement now. This would be one of the first conservation deals of this type in Gaviota for nearly 15 years. There aren't as many landowners who want to sell properties in fee or even do these kinds of easement deals. CREF funding is critical for our opportunity to leverage both state and private conservation funding and raising the rest of the funds necessary to buy this easement. Next slide, please. This is just a final thing to show you the location of a potential future home site looking right down at Ruffujo State Beach. I hope you would consider funding this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman.
Thank you. And then our last presentation is by Virginia Souza for proposal number 10.
Hello, supervisors. Chair Nelson, my name is Virginia Souza. I've been a volunteer with the Natural History Museum since its founding over 25 years ago. The mission of our organization is to provide free natural history education to the citizens and schools in the Santa Maria area, and we've been doing that since our founding. Next slide, please. Could I have the next one? The, I think there was one before that. There. This is a footprint of the property located in downtown Santa Maria, right across the street from the public library parking lot on South McClelland. You can see that it's a very small area. The building is a historical landmark, the heart home, and that's where the interior exhibits exist. The exterior is a native garden. Part of the CREF funding will go for, in the top area of the photograph, you can see a sandy area and that front corner, that will be a Channel Islands garden and currently. And then the sandy area has the current whale, shark, and dolphin exhibit. The little circle in front of the building on the right-hand side, just below that garden area, is a dolphin sculpture. And we could go to the next slide. That is a jadeite dolphin's sculpture created by John Cody, an area artist, out of our state rock jadeite. Part of the funding, we got partial funding and we have been given matching grants from a donor to create a faux fountain. We originally wanted to have a water feature around that, but due to the drought and other issues, it was a decision to create a faux fountain made out of mosaic tiles. You can see the whale and dolphin, the life-size whale and dolphins in the background, the little free library, which was very popular during the pandemic. It's up in the front of the property there. Next slide, please. This is the mosaic artist Patty Jacomane. You may know her from, she's from Santa Barbara. Next slide. This part of the grant will go to refurbish the whale, shark, and dolphin models, which have shown some weather wear and tear. Next slide, please. We'll be adding the gray whale. Our motto is, the slogan of our museum is "Where Natural History Comes to Life." So we are designing the gray whale to have real water come out of its spout when classes are visiting, just to bring up the topic of the whale not being a fish and how they breathe. We have live sounds from dolphin clicks to the killer whale song right now. We'll be adding the gray whale song, which is distinctive. Next slide, please. Part of the grant will go to educating our visitors about our river systems and the tributaries and the watershed. We'll be partnering with the city on display about what goes down the drain ends up in the ocean. Next slide. And we have an endangered, threatened, extinct, recovered labeling on some of our collection. And this is the steelhead trout exhibit inside the museum. Part of the grant will go to replace the live water feature that's in the background of the steelhead. Next slide. And then you can see, not that clearly from this charcoal rendering, but a steelhead will be exiting that exhibit through a plexiglass piece and swimming down a river and out toward an open ocean exhibit in the main room to demonstrate visually how this fish has the flexibility to live in a freshwater environment and then adapt to a saltwater environment for up to two years before swimming back into its native river system for spawning. Next slide, please. We'd like to thank Kathy Pfeifer and you folks, the Santa Barbara County of Supervisors for CREF Oversight. We have provided thousands of various students each year under normal circumstances with free natural history education in our own backyard, and CREF has been responsible for many of our most exciting exhibits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Souza. Kathy, would you like to wrap it up before we go back to the board for questions?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, I'm just, we're here for any questions you might have. I enjoyed all the presentations from the applicants and we're all here for questions.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Pfeifer. Back to the board. Any questions? Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I had a brief conversation with Meredith Hendricks from the Land Trust for Santa Barbara County, and she explained to me that they were very appreciative of the stack recommendation for the funding for the Aurela Ranch Conservation Easement, but that the package of funding that they had put together to accomplish that kind of hinged on a higher-level commitment from the county and that she was concerned that the other layered funding sources might not work with the lower recommended amount. She was not suggesting the entire $700,000 original request was necessary, but I'm wondering if somebody from the Land Trust is here to talk to that and could speak to that. if somebody from the Land Trust is here to talk to that and could speak to that nuance.
Thank you Supervisor. Meredith Hendricks, the Executive Director of the Land Trust for Santa Barbara County is here. I appreciate the question and also your consideration of our grant application today. It is indeed the case that we recognize that there are potential compelling projects coming forward in future years on the Gaviota Coast that are worthy of investment. We do have the Aurelia Ranch project that is ready to move forward now, and we have other pending public sources of funds that we are trying to build out our fundraising strategy against. We also have a robust plan for individual donor fundraising, and we really need this investment of the CREF grant to kick off the momentum. This project is significant in terms of the View Shed and in terms of the overall complexion of what we're trying to achieve on the Gaviota Coast, and a significant investment from the CREF grants would really, really be important to us being able to move this project forward. So a grant more on the order of $300,000 would go a long way to allowing us to raise the remaining amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, I think the Aurelia Ranch project merits that, and I would definitely support that.
Just a point of order. Are we asking questions now or are we deliberating? Because I think we need to keep the two separate.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll wait till deliberation.
All right. Any other questions? And we need to check in on public comment. So let's go ahead and go to public comment. Do we have any speakers?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, we do have one request to speak who was with us and just logged off. So if that one individual who did request to speak on this item would like to provide their comments, please log in now to do so. Thank you.
All right, we'll keep an eye on that and come back to it if that person returns to the Zoom. So any additional questions from the board about these items? All right, so I guess we will be moving on to, let's just hold on just a second to see if we can get to public comment.
Chair Nelson and members of the board, we do have our one request to speak, and that is Doug Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. When you're ready.
Chair Nelson, Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to comment on the 2021 CREF cycle. My name is Doug Kern. I'm the Executive Director of the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. For 25 years, GCC has been dedicated to protecting the rural character and environmental integrity of the Gaviota Coast. My comments are directed to Project 9, the Aurelia Ranch Conservation Easement. GCC has been a strong advocate for protecting the coast and supports permanent protection of coastal properties. The proposed conservation easement on the Aurelia Ranch is an important opportunity for permanent protection of agricultural lands on the Gaviota Coast. Full disclosure relative to my comments, Gunnar Tottrum is the son of the landowner for this CE, and Mr. Tottrum has been a member of the GCC Board for over 15 years. I understand the sensitivity for me to speak on this issue, so let me focus on the great work of the Land Trust for Santa Barbara County in this effort and the importance of preserving agricultural lands in this area. We face ongoing development threats, and landowners are vulnerable to selling properties when developers make large offers. We have a landowner who is willing to permanently give up development rights for a relatively small amount of funds. It's important to compensate landowners and protect their property in perpetuity. I appreciate the staff recommendation to provide $175,000 in funding. I encourage you to go further and provide a higher award in the neighborhood of $300,000 for this conservation easement. The full requested amount will strongly assist in securing this conservation easement to permanently protect this coastal property. Thanks so much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Okay, I think now we're back to the board for some deliberations. Not everybody at once. Supervisor Hart?
Well, yeah, I do think that Ms. Hendricks' request for the closer to the $300,000, I mean, if we just used the $118,000 that we're deferring, is that right? Is that what I'm looking at? I've got your notes on the piece here, but I've lost track of my things, that that would get us to $293,000. That would be right in the ballpark, I think.
Supervisor Hartman?
Oh, well, since we're in deliberations, I just wanted to say that I think staff has done a terrific job. It is agonizing to have to decide among all these fabulous projects, and I just can't help but say, the new tracks, I hope our county parks was paying close attention because I'd like to see that at some of our other, at Halama, for example, or I know we have a wheelchair at Guadalupe Dunes, but nothing quite like this. And they've just been extraordinary projects coming forward. And so overall, I am very supportive of staff recommendations. In terms of the reef project, I think it's important to have the permitting or a scientific basis. I think a one-off in just giving the money without more foundation makes me a little uncomfortable. So I would like to see the permitting go further and some validation perhaps from UCSB and the Marine Science Institute there, or just a better grasp of what that means for that ecosystem. And I also would be supportive of increasing the amount. On the Gaviota Coast, we may have some acquisition opportunities, and so we don't have a lot of money every year in this program, so we're trying to sock it away. But I do think that this offers an excellent opportunity to protect some continuous acreage, given that we already have some parcels nearby where we have conservation easements and to protect wildlife corridors and endangered species. And it is a significant view shed, and it is close to El Cap and Rafufio State Parks, and we can see it. I drive it twice a day on the 101. So I would be supportive of 250 or 300, but I want to husband resources for some other opportunities that would offer some huge public access benefits to the coast if they come to fruition.
Thank you Supervisor Hartman. Supervisor Williams? Yep. Mrs. Zorvich?
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to chime in. I know you're in the middle of deliberations, and I just wanted to maybe just briefly touch on what Supervisor Hartman was saying, and that is, just to give a little bit more background in that, you know, this is an opportunity, and staff did recognize that, but we also, you know, again, are trying to have, hold on to some monies for some potential future sites down the road, which would give other opportunities for public access that this one does, this would not. The conservation easement is certainly a great idea. It does not give us the county access to it for the public, and it doesn't have direct access to the beach. And those were just some of the reasons why we weren't supporting it with a higher dollar amount, and I just wanted to provide that additional background.
Thank you, Mrs. Zorvich. Supervisor Williams?
Well, I understand it's a tough, it's a tough balance. I think it's, the hard part is it's really hard to do anything in open space acquisition or easement acquisition for, you know, for less than $200,000, right? So I would also, like my colleagues, support a higher amount for the, for number nine, the Aurelia Ranch Conservation Easement. I also support the other staff recommendations. I'm very curious about the Goleta Kelp Restoration Project. I mean, I do think there is something to this. There has been a lot of work done on research deployment of devices. They're different than these devices, so I guess I would, I suppose there is, as Supervisor Hartman said, there may be better, more due diligence that we could do. But on the other hand, we only do this once every other year, and so I don't know, I suppose I would, I would be okay with leaving it out if we left the door open to looking at it next year. The reason only is because I've been looking at this project almost as long as I've been looking at competitive ambulance bidding. So, you know, I mean, it's, it takes a long time for these things to happen, and so I think Beacon, it was proposed to Beacon as far back as 2005 to do this, and there are some devices out there, they're working very well. It is a different design than this, and so maybe I'm okay with not just handing them the money today, but I do think that we should fund it after we see maybe some more due diligence, maybe even add to the motion the ability to come back next year instead of waiting two years if the project has permitting.
Thank you Supervisor Williams. Supervisor Hartman?
Well, we did some inquiry from our office with the Marine Science Institute at UCSB, and what they said was kelp enhancement via small structures like these is not usually a cost-effective solution, and that possibly the natural sand flow will likely cover these balls, just like it covered the natural reef. So the ultimate suggestion in this email is that we need to do more research about the kinds of projects that we want to fund. So I wouldn't be prepared at this time to make that kind of commitment without more background.
Supervisor Williams?
I think that that defies what the truth on the ground has been, which is that these, now admittedly, they are a different design to what is being proposed here. So I do not know that this design is efficacious, but the previous designs have worked. Not only have they worked for kelp replenishment, you know, if you want, I can, we can swim out there and I'll show you, but it also works for octopus habitat because the design that they did provides Rafufio on the ones that are currently deployed out there. And so, you know, I'm familiar with this debate, but I am also familiar with the reality on the ground that the kelp reef that was there has not come back naturally in 40 years, and I'm okay with giving Mother Nature a little bit of help here to create what will be good habitat. That being said, I don't know that we've done enough vetting on this one, so I guess I would vote against a recommendation that leaves it out unless we left the door open to come back earlier than two years from now.
Supervisor Hartman?
Yes. Well, you're, I do have a question then for the applicant, if they're still there. And I'm sorry to have to ask this, but were you involved, someone was involved in unpermitted deposition of these devices, and was it you a couple of years ago?
I think I can answer that. I think I know who that is, and it's not them. I think it's the folks that Beacon funded, in fact, but their scientific bona fides were also pretty impressive, so, you know, I'm not, you know, I think we're getting in the realms of academic fighting, but if I have to choose a battle line, I'm definitely on this in support of kelp reef out in Goleta, and this is real habitat restoration, and it has habitat value unless, you know, I mean, the impressive kelp beds that we once had along the coast were enormously important habitat, and we had that enormously important habitat in Goleta Bay until 1983, and we don't have it anymore. And there is a chance to have it back.
Last comment, if I may.
Yes, please.
Well, I'm a diver too, and I realize that our kelp forests are extraordinary. But before we go fooling with them, for me, it would be very important to have scientific validation of the process, and especially if we're going to give this money without first having it go through the permit process.
Thank you. Now seeing if anybody else jump in, I'll talk about some of my priorities here.
I just want to know on the record, I'm pro-octopus habitat, okay?
So I'm actually interested in that as well. I think that, you know, the potential to protect Goleta Beach is important here, and if we can move that along and try some different things, I think that that's actually going to save us money in the long run if we can find some solutions there. I'm looking at their proposal, and, you know, $61,000 is what the first part of that, that would actually get them through permitting. So if that's something that we want to look at, you know, that gets them through their final design and engineering, and then $50,000 is what they have down for permitting. I don't know if that's realistic cost or not, but just throwing that out there. If that moves that along. The other project that I'm most in favor of, and it's no secret, I would be a big fan, is of the Coastal Splash Zone at Cabrillo High School. You know, as a former Long Pooh Unified School District teacher, you know, and having these students, as my students, I just know how important this asset is to Long Pooh Valley. You know, there's one of those things that we all hear about, there's, you know, there's nothing to do in town. You know, there is a aquarium in our backyard that is very impressive, and with the work that they're doing with the young men and women that are learning leadership skills, project management is extraordinary, as well as, you know, there's 10,000 students in the Long Pooh Unified School District that are going to benefit from this. So for me, of all the projects, you know, that's a lot of bing for your buck, as well as that's open to, as you heard in the presentation, virtually, and they've been able to do tours for people out as far as Oklahoma during the pandemic, and it's been a pandemic-resistant presentation, and so they continue to do that over the last year. $50,000 is their current allocation. I'd be supportive of something that might continue to maybe increase that number. I don't know where we get it from, but that's something I'm in favor of. So how do we, how do we do this?
I thought your solution was a good compromise, is help fund it through permitting and then let the agencies that permit this be the recipient of the academic debate that we just previewed. So let them arbitrate the efficacy of kelp replenishment, but we give it $60,000 ability to try.
Push, yep. Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I think that the goal of restoring the kelp habitat at Goleta Beach is, everybody probably supports that. There are two, though, different things going on at the same time with the two different restoration projects, and that hasn't been coordinated, and it does need to be coordinated. It can't just be these two individual groups of folks putting stuff out there, you know, without there being some collaboration cooperation. So I think that is sort of the fundamental problem with throwing money at this right today, is that that hasn't even happened. And the other project is in the ground and, you know, being demonstrated as a pilot. So there has to be some sort of coordination of those two efforts. So I don't know that the funding for this proposal, the CK proposal, as opposed to the Octo condo proposal, is right right now. But I absolutely agree with Chair Nelson that the Cabrillo High School Aquarium is an active, live- an active live thing. We have funded other improvements there and, you know, going from $50,000 to their total, I think, $110,000 request. Maybe that's a lot, but, you know, I think we've done in the past sort of a challenge bridge there, but I, you know, where that comes from is, is a little more complicated than the, the Orela Ranch acquisition because the acquisition funds, you know, there's, there's a logical path with the 2021 deferral funding. There's $118,000 that we're deferring to a future date that we could marry to the 175, which would get it to 293. But where we would come up, how we would do the additional, I guess we would just, you know, have to bend that formula in regards to the acquisition and the active projects and then take a little more from that to accomplish the Cabrillo High School.
All right. Let me, let me try something. I think I've seen something happening here. So if we did make that movement on Orela Ranch from some of the other acquisition dollars, move them there. And I feel like I can get struck by Peter Adam Lightning, but we have this maintenance project on Lookout Park, which is important, but we're only asking for 170 here. We're going to give them 40. There's, that's still not even enough. The 170 wasn't even enough due to the entire project. Maybe there's some funds there that can be redistributed. You know, this is kind of a one-time opportunity for a lot of these organizations. You know, $40,000 is still real money that we need to put back into our infrastructure and hopefully there'll be some other opportunities to do that. We're going to need to fund it in a greater amount in the future. And that's, that's a project that needs to be a priority for this board. So I, I think maybe that that's where some of those funds can come from to maybe bolster up the Longpoke project.
Supervisor Williams?
Where, where you from?
Say that, say again?
I'll let you finish.
No, I was just going to say there's some funds there.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, well, that, that, that would be, I mean, I, I guess I'd wonder why would we take out of another meritorious project? I mean, we have, we're detaining 50% of our funds every, every year for something that staff just said, we just need to have it reach a million by the time there is an agreement on Hollister Ranch. I don't, is that going to happen in six months? I don't know. Maybe. The last time I, I poo-pooed the idea that it's going to happen within a year, everybody got mad at me, but, but it, that was two and a half years ago. So I, I don't understand what the sacredness is of, of detaining 50% for that purpose and then having the rest of us argue over the crumbs. If, if we want to put 40,000 more somewhere, I think we should take it out of that.
I don't disagree. I, I don't think that that needs to be a sacred number there. I think when that time comes, the board has made a commitment that they'll fund that, that million dollars. And I, I think CREF, we'll come right back to CREF and we'll look at our other options that we have. So Supervisor Hart?
Well, I think those are two viable ways to get there. I think that, you know, the, the county project at the park, we have money that's unallocated in the budget process. We're being super careful with our, our first, you know, workshop items and there remained a lot of discussion about that. I think we could elevate that conversation in that particular project and there is a big shortfall. You know, $40,000 today isn't going to determine whether that project goes forward, is going to need additional funding. So there's, there's two different totally viable paths to get to where we're all trying to get. And I think it's just a matter of what the board wants to do.
Right. And I, and I wanted to add to my, when I thought that something was coming together here, I did want to support Supervisor Williams when he said if we need to wait for this to come back in a year to see if that, that's out a little bit more on the C capes. I, I'm willing to support that absolutely. I, I think that's where we get everybody to be happy here and move this forward. I know that that's not the cycle that we've, we've been in, but I think that, that might get us into some kind of consensus.
Supervisor Hartman?
Yes, thank you. One of the things I'm proudest about in serving on this board is that we've made policies like the 18% for infrastructure and, and many others that we've stuck to year to year to year. And then we can see, all right, this has really resulted in following through on our commitments, keeping faith. And we've done that with the CREF program in the two-year. And we've done that setting aside the money for the Hollister Access Program. And now we're saying, well, we, we want to throw that out the door and just ad hoc and I, I, I just don't think that's keeping faith. We, we have a two-year program. That's what we agreed to. That's kind of what people are now used to. And because of one project, we should throw that out. That, that doesn't make sense to me. And, and again, the Hollister Access Program to, to take from that, we, we hadn't funded it. We realized we had a gap. We went, we said, we're going to put the money aside each year like we did with infrastructure. And now we're saying, oh, well, we really don't want to do that after all. So that to me, I, I can't go there.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Hartman.
Supervisor Williams?
I think you're characterizing it in a very strange way. Because the end result is then we spend all the CREF money in your district. You know, so I mean, come on, you know, I, 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 I think.
Let's, let's look at it that way.
Let's, let's not, let's try to stay moving along in a constructive way. Supervisor Levin, you know?
I'm going to, I'm going to give all the money from my district with all my coastal resources and split it among the four of you.
I'm going to send Virginia Sousa after you. So Supervisor Hartman?
Oh, I, I mean, I actually looked at where this money is going and it's, it's, it's not my district particularly.
It's, it's our county and, and we're, we're on the same team here. We're working towards something. So I guess I didn't quite understand if, if we went up from the 160, was it 165 that we had for Orela Ranch to the, so I think we're here in 250 or 300, where were those funds going to come from? I, I'm still confused on that.
Mr., Mr. Chair, this is John Zorvich. Yes, Mr. Chair. So if I was tracking this, I think I, what I heard was for the Orela Ranch, we're right now at 175. And I think there's been some desire to increase that to a number of somewhere between 250 and 300,000. I think what Supervisor Hart was suggesting is take some of the additional funding that we have in the acquisition and, and put it towards that. So if we were to put all the, the acquisition money rather than just a portion of it for both cycles, that would give us the 293,000 for the Orela Ranch. Certainly there's 419 in the deferral program if you wanted to, just as options, you know, there's another, you could perhaps pull seven from that and there you have your 350, 300,000 even. So that would be one of the options of that. You know, then there's the question of, of funding for some of these other ones, just some general comments and responses if I could here.
So, let me just, I just need to understand this because I'm the one that's trying to make a spreadsheet here on my sheet. So the additional potentially 125,000 that would come for Orela Ranch, that's from the acquisition for Hollister? Is that what we're saying or is it, is that a different group?
Supervisor, Mr. Chair, the funds that we're, we were talking about are for the acquisition funds. If you looked at, how can I best describe it, it's table nine in the attachment A.
Yep, there, I'm there.
Have some allocations. And so if you look at the bottom right, or at 2021 and 2020, there's 146,606 available in each CREF cycle year for acquisition. And so what staff has done so far, if you looked at Orela Ranch on that table, they've allocated 146,000, meaning all of 2020's acquisition towards Orela Ranch and 28,000, roughly, I'm just going to use rough numbers, for the 2021 acquisition. So that still left $118,000 in the 2021 acquisition fund that we did not use. We were saving that to squirrel away, if you would, you know, future funding of acquisition. If the board were to decide that they wanted to just use all of that acquisition from both cycles, the 146 and the 146, that would get you to the 293,000.
Gotcha.
For that. And that's not touching the Hollister Ranch allocation. In previous cycles, it has been the board's desire to, you know, save up a million dollars. And so each, it was a decision several cycles ago to allocate the 156,000 each year to that. So eventually we get up to that number. And that was just kind of previous board's desires to get there. I understand that's up for grabs if you would like. I, I wouldn't recommend it because we are trying to achieve that. Then there's other costs too with the Goleeda kelp. That's been a concern today. I just want to give some, I'm not trying to take sides, I just want to give some perspective. In the past, it's been the board's desire not to fund towards, or allocate funding towards permitting. We've basically relied on applicants to seek that themselves. And then once they get the permitting, then the CREF funding has gone forward to submit or to fund whatever has been permitted. That's just, you know, for perspective. But obviously if the board wants to fund that, you know, we can either take from other of these other projects, look for other funding and see where we go with that. But that's basically where the numbers are coming from, from what I'm following the board is saying so far.
All right. Let me, let me try to get this back on the same page again. So if we added 118,000 to the Orela Ranch, we would not be, we would not, we'd still be able to be faithful to the commitment the board has made on Hollister Ranch acquisition. Is that, is that correct? So then the, the last thing that we're kind of disagreeing about is whether we would be willing to come back for a one-year cycle. And, and I know it's over this one project, but again, I want to get everybody, I think that that's what Supervisor Williams is asking to get this to be a highlighted issue moving forward because he's not willing to wait another two years before, if there's an, if there's an ability to move forward to, to deal with this. And so.
And Mr. Chair, can I just add one thing? The reason we are at a two-year cycle is because we're, we don't get that much funding in a given year. So because the revenues are down, we, the board opted to go to two years so that there would be sufficient money to actually consider, consider a reasonable number of applications. So that's just another factor.
All right. I think, I think we understand that. And I guess that the, the ask is if the board would be willing to accommodate that to, to get consensus here. I think that we could still stay committed to our commitments to Hollister Ranch. I think we might be able to fund most of these projects as suggested and has been evaluated by our staff and hopefully get to a unanimous vote if possible. Supervisor, or sorry, Mr. Gazoni, do you have some comments?
Chair and Supervisors, I guess our Clerk Jacqueline Alexander and I were, were talking just on two levels. One, to, to help you along and two, to have some granularity on what action you finally take. And that is that planning and development does have a spreadsheet that they're working with Clerk of the Board on, much like your budget deliberations, so that these discussions you'd be able to track.
This doesn't work?
That, that, that works, that works for now. And we, we would like what works for now to match what works later.
All right.
And I'll, I'll just segue over to Jacqueline.
Yep, I think we're almost up. So is, Supervisor Hart, please.
I think you've got us most of the way there. Then there's this money, the money we need to add to the Cabrillo Aquarium. And I absolutely understand Supervisor Williams' concern about ticket money from his district, from his project.
Absolutely.
You know, and putting that on the Cabrillo project. But I do really, really think that there is, there's a path to get more money for the Lookout Park project through the budget process, you know. And this conversation, I think, is elevating the importance of both those projects. If we were to do that, you know, and, and have a little bit of trust that we're going to be, you know, looking at that carefully in the future, then, you know, we could, we could maintain these, the integrity of these funds and take that $40,000 and put it on the Cabrillo project. And I think we would have a consensus. But that, I think.
So our Supervisor Williams to.
I can have that trust.
Great.
I will, I will have that trust.
And I actually want to hear from Ms. Van Wee, at least the status of that project and where it is in the funding cycle. Where, you know, where is this $40,000 in the perspective of, of being able to accomplish that? And where is it in our capital improvement plan or maintenance plan?
Chair Nelson, great question. So this is just part of the overall park deferred maintenance, the five-year deferred maintenance. It's wrapped up in there. So we were planning on utilizing next year's deferred maintenance, preventive maintenance funds to fund this project. But again, any, we always go for grant opportunities to try to allay any kind of general fund contributions that we're putting towards a project. So.
So we're, we're trying to stretch those dollars and we, and this board definitely appreciates that. CEO Miosato?
Supervisors, to the Chair, you could today direct me to, because we're not having budget hearings for another month, but we're getting everything finalized, you could direct me to provide a minimum, at least $40,000 of general fund in our recommended budget for the Lookout Park. And then the board can, you know, add or do whatever you want at budget hearings, but you could therefore, it's kind of safeguard those funds if you'd like to do that.
We, we can do that, although I, I'm, I'm hearing that that's, it's on the maintenance plan. This is where, you know, it's a question of whether those general, or those, those maintenance dollars get extended to the project after this. This is going to get funded next year is what I just heard. So, you know, this $40,000 is not a make or break for that project, that it is planned on being a funded project for next year. Mr. Gazoni?
Chair, and I wanted to spend just a moment on this, about million dollars of mitigation funds that the board had previously decided to, to save up. And that's because that is an obligation. Those funds were taken for as mitigation for a project and there will be a payback. And if it's not through this avenue, it'll be through another avenue. So I just want to make clear that that is a requirement at some point, however many years down the road. But when it hits, there'll be an obligation to pay that million dollars or so.
Okay. And one last question I have is, so CREF has been one of the ways that we can work on this, this kelp issue. What other avenues do we have this board to, to highlight that, to fund that, to support future endeavors? Is, is this the only opportunity to engage there? I, I don't know the answer to that question and I, you know, and I think that's where I'm hearing from Supervisor Williams here is this is an opportunity and we shouldn't miss it. So CEO Miosato and then Mr. Gazoni?
Chair and Supervisor, Chair Nelson and Supervisors, you always have an opportunity to prioritize different funding and projects. It's your discretion. And you can do that in budget workshops, you can do that part of the hearing, but you always have that opportunity to prioritize how you want your, your, your dollars to be spent because we have not had much discretionary dollars, as you know, in the past. The board has relied on these funds for different types of projects, the ones that meet the criteria. But you'll have more flexibility at budget and you can always prioritize. We just ask that you do prioritize and give us your preferences.
So I guess which department, I'm, I'm kind of wondering, which department touched this? You know, what, what county function, is this parks that ends up being the nexus here or? And Supervisor Hartman's had her light on, so.
I got another idea. We could provide the money to Beacon.
All right. Let's go to Supervisor Hartman, Hart, and then back to Williams.
Sure. I mean, and I would be open to, I could think they'd have to apply for it or we'd, we'd have to do it. But, I mean, this is state lands, this is, but there's, you know, there's natural resource damages, there's the NIFWIF, the National Wildlife Federation Foundation. I mean, there are many sources of funding from other agencies who have a direct responsibility for kelp and, and nearshore waters. It, it's technically not even county lands.
Right. Okay. Supervisor Hart?
Well, if we're ready for a motion, I could do that. So what I have heard us say is that on the staff PowerPoint, slide seven, Recommended Action F, there's $118,212 that were proposed to be deferred from the 2021 fees to an earmark for the Coastal Acquisitions Fund deferral program. That would instead go to the Orela Ranch Conservation Easement. And then we are agreeing to take the $40,000 on item number five for CSD's Lookout Park Bluff Top Erosion Project and add it to the Cabrillo High School project. And I think CEO Miosato's suggestion that while we're here, let's just make that request that she adds the $40,000 for the Bluff Top Erosion Project into the Parks Department budget, just to keep it tight and clean and keep all these boundaries lines in place. And I would make that motion.
Second.
Further discussion?
And does it, does that include a, a, a funding amount to Beacon for a grant for kelp replenishment?
I still think we need to coordinate the two projects. I don't, I don't, I don't understand how they're trying to do the same thing in the same place without coordinating. And so I want that to happen and I think it should happen, but I think it needs a little more.
Okay. I'll, I'll support them.
Okay. Mr. Gazoni?
Chair and Supervisors, again, I was tracking the motion, but I, I think populating the sheet would be helpful and also knowing whether this, whether you're going to go through recommended actions one by one or. or move the rest of these along with it, and also how you would incorporate the conceptual direction about staff returning in one year versus the two-year CREF cycle. I don't think you need a formal amendment of the CREF guidelines today, but just some direction from the board so that planning would know what they're operationalizing for next year.
So we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Well, no, it's been seconded already. So I guess there's clarification on what we want to do. So let's move forward this motion and then ask the question as a board, so we don't tangle this up about how we want to do future years of CREF.
Yeah, I think they're populating the thing, so why don't we just take that question separately? I, for one, the money's shrinking, there's a lot of staff time involved. It does take up time. I still like the two-year cycle. So I understand what Supervisor Hartman said about, we make commitments, follow through with them. So, I mean, this is the plan we've been on, let's stick with it.
So there's, I'm willing to support coming back in a year. If that gets us to moving this issue forward in a year from now, maybe some of these things can be resolved. And so I'm actually supportive of coming back next year.
Chair Nelson and members of the board, sorry, my apologies. Really quick, if Kathy Pfeifer can please email the updated Excel spreadsheet to the GSCA email address. We can get that up here in the hearing room. And perhaps she could walk us through what she heard from that motion as well, just so then it's very clear for us all. But if we could wait to have that up on the screen, that would be great. Thank you.
So does the conceptual motion mean we come off, come back in a one-off for the, to answer the kelp questions in a year, is I think the question?
It's, we're going to, I think we're separate those two motions. So we're going to take the funding motion clearly by itself, and then we're going to go ahead and have a vote on whether we come back in a year or we continue a two-year cycle from here. So, again...
Are we pausing for the PowerPoint?
Yeah, we're pausing Supervisor Hart's motion that's been seconded by Supervisor Hartman.
Okay.
And if Supervisor Williams wanted to make a motion, come back in a year, I would provide the second.
Then let's just handle that motion first, since we're not waiting for the...
Right.
So I'm not saying to bring the whole grant process back. I'm just saying, instead of trying to allocate $60,000 today and not have the coordination issue worked out, or the bona fides issue worked out, that we just allow for a single question to come back, you know, in a year. And that would be my motion on the kelp replenishment project. And that would be my motion.
And I'll second that, understanding that we're just talking about kelp and Galita Beach, that the other, the Octo condo project might be the one that comes in requesting the $60,000, or this. There's going to be some coordination, there's going to be some science. It's not going to just be a permit, it's going to, you know, advance the project. And I think that is all the basis that everybody's looking for.
And it doesn't necessarily be a CREF cycle. It's, how about we have an item on the kelp bed growth programs in a year from now?
There you go.
And discuss the options that we have as a board to partner with these various agencies to bring things forward.
So if I'm clear, then it's not in the context of CREF? If it is, I wouldn't support it. And that's fine. But if it isn't, if it's to talk about kelp restoration in general and various options, I would heartily support that.
Okay. Because I think what...
I wouldn't want to do a bait and switch. I would think that CREF would, wouldn't be one of the possibilities of funding it.
And I think the board would have that discretion at that time to direct staff to come back with some CREF options for us, if that was what we came to a conclusion at that hearing. Mr. Gazoni?
Chair and Supervisors, my special point is that the board has a lot of discretion on this process and the timing of this process. You have less discretion on the Nexus, and that's what we emphasized at the beginning. It might be helpful just to hear from the Planning Director, just on whatever noticing or outreach she does as part of the normal CREF cycle, and it might impact your decision also.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Gazoni. So typically, what we do is we have a cycle, right, where people apply for grants. And if we were going to have a cycle next year, I would think we would open it up and allow everybody to apply for grants. So...
That is, that's not the intention.
Right. So I would recommend not making it a CREF cycle process. That is what my suggestion would be then.
So what I'm going to suggest is that we make it a hearing a year from now, and we explore our options at that time. And at that time, we could direct staff to look at CREF funds or look at other additional revenue sources or grant opportunities for the county. Is that acceptable? Supervisor Williams?
Sure.
All right. So, and there was a second from Supervisor Hart on that. And any further discussion about that?
Yeah. I just want to say I won't support this because of what our Planning Director said. I think it really muddies the water for everyone.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? So we're going to go ahead and take the motion that Supervisor Williams proposed.
Just...
Yep. Supervisor Lavignino?
Okay. So it's coming back in a year. I want to learn about kelp restoration, right?
Yeah, me too.
I want to see how, because I've heard this stuff going on since I've been here. But we wouldn't think at that time of then saying, okay, yeah, that sounds like a really good program. Let's go take CREF funding right now and give you $60,000. I mean, that I wouldn't support. Well, I'm thinking you say, yes, this is a good program, we like this one, and when CREF comes around, we're going to. Now we understand it. So what I'm thinking is we're giving people a year to get their act together, come together, come to us with a solution, and we know what the solution is, and we can move forward in the next cycle. If that's not what we're doing, then I'm also out. But, you know, it's, what is it, $60,000?
It's all made up. We're just trying to get to the finish line here. This is like that Family Circle cartoon where the kids go...
We always argue about 40 and 60,000 way longer than we do 40 and 60 million.
I don't think we're committing any funds at this time. We're committing to having a presentation on this and options for the board to move this further. And that's what I, that's the commitment that I see that we're bringing along.
But I think it's, I agree with Supervisor Lavignino. If we're, if it's a two, if we're not compromising the two-year cycle for CREF, I would support it. If we're saying, next year, we're going to get this report, and we're going to take the money at that point from CREF, then I won't support it.
I think we're going to make that decision a year from now.
Yeah, that option's on the table every Tuesday for us to do that. So we're not committing to that today. I mean, if we noticed it, but...
Chair Nelson?
Yes, CEO Miasato?
So if you're going to vote on the motion, I'm not sure Supervisor Williams' motion, which got seconded, is the same thing as you're saying. So could someone just clearly state the motion for the record on this?
We will return a year from now, entertaining the concept of a kelp replenishment project. The recipient of the funds could be Beacon, and Beacon could decide what, which entity to provide that with, if that makes it more legitimate. And then, and we'll determine in a year what the funding source is.
Okay.
Second.
All right. And I'm going to support that motion. Is there any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, can we call a roll?
Supervisor Hart?
Aye.
Supervisor Hartman?
Aye, if I understand it.
Supervisor Lavignino?
Aye.
Supervisor Williams?
Aye.
And Chair Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now back to the original purpose of this, of this item, one of the original purposes of this item. So I believe we have up on the screen the reallocation of the 118,212 from our balance that has been dedicated to the Orela Ranch Conservation Easement, and then a reduction of the $40,000 allocation from Lookout Park, and have reallocated those funds to the Cabrillo High School Aquarium Project, bringing that to $90,000. So those are the two adjustments from staff recommendations. And I believe that there was a motion from Supervisor Hart, and it was seconded by Supervisor Hartman. Is there any disagreement on that? Is there any further discussion on that? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And do we need a motion on the remaining items that were not part of that? Or would that include...
Didn't your motion include the remaining items?
It actually didn't, but...
Okay.
I don't know what we did.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and...
If we did that, then we're done.
Go ahead, Supervisor Hart, would you like to...
I make a motion on the remaining staff recommendations.
Supervisor Hartman?
To include this remaining staff recommendation.
Okay. Any further discussion about those? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Chair Nelson?
CEO Miasato?
As part of Supervisor Hart's motion, was that regarding direction to me in the budget or not?
Yes, it was. All right. This, we now adjourn our meeting to May 18th, 2021.